Hello, everybody. This is the subcommittee meeting on the budget. We are holding our second night. I am about to read the roll call for the meeting. Councillor Zabid. Councillor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Councillor Todd Taylor is present. Councillor Giovanna Cupro is present. Also Leo Robinson is present. Councillor Calvin Brown. Councillor Damali Vidal. Councillor Melinda Vega is absent. She's dealing with some family issues. Councillor Ymir Rodriguez.
Here.
Councillor Roya Vizaneda is here. Councillor Daniel Lopez.
Here.
All right, we have eight present and three absent. Okay. Looking at the agenda for the second night of the budget hearing, we have next up is the Informational Systems Department, IT basically. So with that, I'll let Ed Dunn take over.
My name is Ed Dunn. I'm the City Autodoc for the City of Chelsea. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to help present the budget to the council this evening. Department number 155, this is on page 14 of the budget proposal. It is on page six of the annotated City Manager's Proposal, and the salary worksheet is page nine. Page 14 of the proposal. Page six of the annotation document. And page nine on the salary documentation. Now, last night, we had talked about the variances in the salary categories. And so I'll make a general comment here to start off the night that the variances between FY21 proposed and FY20's adopted are due to several factors. The 53rd week.
Ed, hold on one second. Did you say?
You just repeat the pages one more time.
Yes.
Page 14.
14 here.
Of the.
Yeah.
Proposal document. Page six.
Six.
Of the annotated document.
This one?
No, salary would be page nine. Salary listing is page nine. The annotated document.
Okay, I see here salary.
Page six.
And page six on this one, which is the financial report. No, that's financial.
No, that's a different document. This would be annotated.
Oh, I see annotated, okay. So 60.
Six on the annotated version. 14 on the proposed budget document. And page nine on salary listing.
Page one hundred and fifty, okay.
So I just wanted to point out, as we did last night, that there's a difference. The variance between the 21 proposal and the 20 adopted has several reasons. The first of that is the 53rd week allotment in fiscal '21. The second is a comparison in FY20, which did not include the FY20 salary increases. Those were in the salary reserve line instead. And the third factor was the step increases. And so those three combined would create the percentage of change that you see in the FY21 proposal. So I won't be going through that with every department as we get started through last night. So that's just a general comment related to how you will see the salaries projected from the document. So on page 14, the MIS Department, Ramon Garcia is here with us this evening. This department has four staff members. You look into the operations section. The operations section of the budget has a slight drop in the contract services. The contract services line in general funds internet contract services, financial management software, GIS, telephone hardware, and email systems. There's some drop in that. Ramon can talk about where that is if you need him to. In the capital section, you'll note that there's a $50,000 allotment for police cruiser equipment. That's the tough books. And in the computer equipment, there's a Cisco update and desktops. Those were part of the CIP plan, the revised CIP plan that I believe council saw several weeks ago. So that $130,000 is attributed to the capital piece. Overall, this budget is down 29%. Sorry, that's the capital section. This budget is down 5%. Or $74,000. Do we have questions on the IT budget?
Anyone here? Any councillor Vidal? Oh, no, okay, sorry. Sorry, wait. Any other councillors have any questions? Seeing none? Okay, Ramon said, thank you. Thank you, Ramon.
Okay, next is the assessing department. This will be page. Page number seven. In the proposed document. Page number three. In the annotated document. And page number five. In the salary listing. So that's page seven. In the proposed document, page three. In the annotated document, page five. In the salary listing. Okay. So you'll notice this, in the salary line, the salary is down 85,000. We have a position reduction of the Director of Assessing that is listed in this budget for this year. Tom had mentioned last night that we would try to reduce costs because of facing an FY21 with reduction of. So this is reflecting a drop of the department's director, Director of Assessing. The interim director is supported by a $30,000 other professional increase, other professional services increase in the operations section. That's to act as support for the interim assessor. So those are the basic changes in this department. Overall, this department is down 14%. Nearly $56,000. Do we have any questions on assessor?
Yes, Tom. This is a question I had and was working on initially that was brought up last year about the ability of our contractor. I can't think of the contractors.
Vision.
Vision. We met, I met with the past assessor, and Mary Lou Ireland, and the, one of the gentlemen representing Vision Company, his name was Michael, about them attempting to do a better job, basically, on multifamilies but also commercial. There was an understanding that within Vision that there was not probably the expertise, particularly on the commercial side when it comes to assessments and possibly having some funding so that the assessor could go out and do an RFP and hire a company that could help better value commercial properties in particular. So I'm curious, is that in the appraisal services section here? Or is that something that is missing?
So I would say that is our goal. But this department is going to struggle sort of in FY21 while we try to hire a permanent assessor. So we, in the middle of the COVID crisis, we lost our Director of Assessing. We have had, we went out of Athens, had like very few Athens. Our expectation is that we're going to try to tread water for the first half of this year while we seek a permanent Chief of Assessor. And this is a, this idea that we need to look more carefully at our commercial property is something that we want to do. I'm just cautioning you that for the next six months, with a limited staff in there, what we've had hope to accomplish in FY21 is going to be delayed. So it's just, it's, we're in a tough situation here in assessing. Out of the reason why we've included some additional money, some significant additional money in the other, in the other professional services line, which is.
I didn't.
We're probably going to need some outside consulting.
This year down here where I have it alone now and go to another site too. Ramon. Okay. I'm sorry, councillor Calvin, you were saying something? Calvin, were you trying to say something?
No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to really use my system here. It's new to me, so I'm sorry I'm talking in the background.
Okay, so.
So the bottom line is that we still have these issues that we need to deal with on commercial properties and multifamily properties, and that is our goal. All I'm suggesting to you is, with a shorthanded staff for at least the first half of FY21, we may not get as much done as we had hoped before the setting of the FY21 tax rate. That is our goal. But first, we need to get this office fully staffed, and that's going to be our effort over the course of the summer. I've included a lot of money in this professional services because we're going to need some outside consulting help just to meet the minimum requirements we're going to need because we can't do what we need to do in that office with just three people. So we're gonna, this is, this is going to be a bit of a struggle in that assessing office for the next three or four months. Hopefully, we can get someone on board. It's sort of why I've asked for this assessor to be intramuly appointed only for a six-month period because the hope is that by the end of this calendar year, we'll have a Chief of Assessing in place. So I'm just, I'm not denying that this is a goal. We recognize that we have some commercial properties that are undervalued, and we have some multifamilies that have been undervalued. But understand two things. There hasn't been much ability to do a whole lot in the last three months in terms of getting into buildings or doing the kind of assessment work we're doing. And with the loss of our Chief of Assessing, it's only exacerbated.
In light of the difficulties that is facing the assessors department, how does that, in the lack of what we may see some progress in valuation for fair valuations for both commercial and multifamilies, how would that potentially impact the tax rate? Because I imagine, like any good city manager, you're going to suggest that the city, that the city continue and go forward with a two-and-a-half rate increase on the levy. And my concern that I raised last year was that that levy and the valuations are not fair. And if we continue, if we go in this direction without being able to make the changes because of the difficulties facing assessors, are we not just continuing the possibility of what happened, what I believe is unfair for some homeowners versus commercial and multifamily?
Yeah, I guess I would say what I said last year, which is our, no one claims that our numbers are perfect. There's probably no city in the world whose numbers are perfect. But they're, they're satisfactory to the Department of Revenue. So I don't think they're unfair. I think, as we said last year, we know that we can probably do a little bit better job, particularly in terms of looking at our multifamily units, especially the large apartment buildings and our commercial properties. But we don't think they're unfair. They get certified by the Department of Revenue every single year. I'm just saying that we have committed to continuing to improve our values, and that's what we're still committed to. I'm saying is that the progress we had hoped to make between last October and this October, we're not going to make as much progress as we hoped. I'm not saying we won't make any progress, but given the combination of COVID-19, which has prevented a lot of work by the assessors, and the loss of a key person, we're not going to accomplish what we had hoped to accomplish when I was before the council last October. I still think our values are fair, they're accurate, and they will be certified by the Department of Revenue. But I want to do even better. I committed to the council to do even better. I'm just giving you a caution that in the absence of a full-time Chief of Assessor, which I don't have yet, and in light of the current situation where even now it's impossible to get inside most buildings, what we had hoped to accomplish last October is going to be doing.
And again, in light of that, where are we in the potential of funding a outside entity to assist the assessors department so that we can catch up or at least review the existing values that may set a, again, a close evaluation to what we think may be fair?
So I have 30 additional thousand dollars in here for outside consulting services. But some of that is going to be used just to sort of tread water between now and the setting of the tax rate. So I don't, I wasn't privy to the specific conversation you had with the chief, so I don't know what she promised in terms of like consulting to do that specific work. We do have money in here, much more than in the past, for outside consulting services.
So the conversation between myself, Mary Lou Ireland, and the gentleman from Vision was that they would put together maybe an RFP to get a third party in to review values of the commercial property so that we could get a fair levy overall. That was the discussion.
So I don't, Jim, do you know if anything had happened with respect to that? I don't.
One of the big things of Vision had to do with scrolling the signings determining the commercial land values. I'm sorry, I said. So to determine the land values, which happened around 2000. So I don't know what happened in the past. 20 years ago, we touched on it. So now we have to go basically, redo every land value for each commercial property in the city, 1,010. And with Vision, they downloaded their staff and they threw them test deposit, and everything was on hold. So before we were in the departure, we started riding the city and going back by back by back on these process. Started, started updating, then I was shooting up. My workload has increased that I had put that on hold right now. One of the big things we can do, and because we're finishing up the year, the fiscal year now, trying to deliver growth. I don't press it on 420 next year expectations since COVID started because we had a shift. What we did, we no longer do mean series. We started the next year's. So we can kind of come and go back in and do the same. So we make good use of the time and we can do a decent number of assumptions based because it's a cost model, so we go to the buildings. I can see steel, I can see steel trusses. I can see certain things that develop with cost model because the income has to be within 15% of the cost of the property. So that's the basis for it. And then we come to London. I can do analysis on the 111s, the larger multifamily and get developed cap rates. Get based upon the income expense and the data available that we now have in post, which is quite defensible. So we can take their data, just scrub and clean it. I can get part of the best data we can get. Similar to a residential analysis, but better because it's all experts have gone over everything. So then we can use that to develop our own cap rates, develop our own data, and then compare it to Vision. So the main classes that we have to look at, and again, if you started this in July, there are the large-scale residential, the A family. We don't have any 200 classes, 300 is retail. And then we have, we don't have that many industrial. There's, there's a few, some of the large scale, but not, not many. But we can get a good number of the, technically the high-scale apartments at 111s, 112s, so it's, it's taxes residential bank-wise when you sit in the commercial. But we can take a good chunk of those numbers and it can produce some progress. Decide taking a good, a good cargo cap. So that's what we're going to compare to Vision. But the big thing is we have to work with Vision to sign the taxes first.
Okay. Tom, it's Cupro.
I want to ask you a question. So the bulk of our income is coming from residential. 85% of properties in Chelsea residential, 15% in commercial. I think on a cost basis, I believe it's. Because if I was pure commercial properties with the value, I have to check the LA4, I think it's about 22% of overall value from properties is coming from commercial and the other seven year residential.
So if we had more commercial, will be less of a burden on owners? That's always the desire of every municipality to generate more commercial growth and take pressure off residential property taxes. It's why every municipal leader seeks commercial growth.
We actually had, you know, the president the other day in the office. The tax, effective tax rates for the residents, we do those numbers to see basically what they're paying in taxes versus their, their property values. And ones are very recognized by the 100%. And because the residents, the owners of occupied properties and the building residential function, and they can have other statutory exemptions, we have a tax rate coming in at 0.3% actually when most things are 100%. So I understand where you're coming from, but they are, with the exemptions that the city offers is very beneficial to owner of private property.
I just want to clarify something. Jim is a very talented guy. We're lucky to have him. I'm fairly excited about him being in the office. He will make some progress. I just want to temper the expectation that in this COVID era, things that we had hoped to get done, we haven't been able to get done, especially in the last few months. And with a huge person lost in that department for the time being, which is not going to get done despite Jim's talent as much as I had hoped to get done when I was before the council last year. We will still make progress in the year. And our goal is that by December, have this department operating well, assuming we can find someone that can be an appropriate colleague for Jim and work well at the city. I will tell you that finding good assessors is hard. There aren't a lot of assessors out there in the marketplace. This is a sort of unique kind of expertise in a kind of field, municipal assessing and assessing. It's really hard to find talented people. So we're, we're going to do our best. I just, this is going to be a few months where we're going to be operating with a little bit of handicap.
Tom, in regards to challenging values and potentially having some owners, particularly say commercial, appeal the tax, where are we as far as funding the account for abatement overturns? So it's, where is, what's the, what's the level of funding right now as compared to in years past? Are we, you know, we are aggressive. If the city is aggressive and starts to challenge and we have to have certain amounts in the account, where are we with that sort of funding?
You, you don't have to worry about us having sufficient funds to pay legal fees to challenge aggressively on these abatement applications because we have a very good lawyer that we're using now. We are aggressively challenging. Jim can talk a bit more. But if we need more money, we have plenty of money in our overlay reserve. We have, I don't know what the number is. I can check it, but my guess is off the top of my head, it's probably in excess of $3 million in overlay reserve, which is, and the assessing department can access that for any required legal fees to challenge cases. So we can, and we are being very aggressive. Jim can give you a sense of how many more challenges we're dealing with now than we have in the past.
Next quarter, September 18, regular season, we had 87. We had most of those internally, some outsourced with the private attorney. This year, we had 212. We went through a lot of them. The result of people not understanding that, yes, you're valuing but there's other value of many cases of taxing now because the offset of the values that we have with the tax rate went down residential, a lot of people saw negative tax bill. Tax bill was less than the private here, or very minimal tax increase once they had experienced because depreciation was low. That's why we were so aggressive going down, trying to get new houses or just doing the periphery that we can now. They said, oh, this house has a roof, a building, new roof, new windows. It certainly don't have an effective age in 1960. Brand of ops, inappropriate effective age, which increases the depreciation and value of the lot. And again, that's just a big fairness. Some of the discrepancies, they do, they found abatement. Most. People during the census were changing depreciation tables, which is, had to get that done in 25 years. We did it last year. There were a few that didn't line up. We went out to them. If it was appropriate, it would be incorrect. They didn't follow into only the new category. We adjusted accordingly. If someone was back from failure, they were denied. They don't bring into file with the tax bill. Commercially, expect the same thing. We have commercial debt and we're reducing the number of people.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have one, councillor. So, Mr. Manager, did I hear you correctly? You said we're using outside legal. So, um, Mr. Manager, did I hear you correctly, you said we're using outside, um, legal, uh, attorneys today? Tom.
Sorry.
That we still need outside people.
Yes, we are gonna, part of the reason for the increase in professional services is to, uh, utilize vision more than we typically do in order to help us get through this period where we are down one person. I just want to add one more thing. If and when we are in position to hire a director of assessing, we will need to come back for a salary adjustment in this document. We have not included that. I just don't know how long it's going to take me to find a good assessor. So we're not carrying a salary here. I will come back to the council mid-year with an adjustment to this number at some point. When and if we find someone that we think would make a good partner with you and would fall asleep.
And, and, and the person that was just, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, the person that was just speaking, that's a, he's say, he's an assessor, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Right, if you can relate that to him, I'm not sure. The person that we just spoke to, is he the person that we just, um, confirmed?
You don't know how to run a.
Yes.
Jim is, Jim is, right now is, is acting chief of assessing.
Right, I, 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 I thought he was, but I've never been introduced to him, that's why I was asking the question. I don't know how many council members have been introduced to him, so it's good time, maybe introduce him.
So this is Jim Sullivan, he was the assistant chief of assessing, he is now acting chief of assessing. Uh, you've seen his resume, his resume is before you because he's, he is up before you for appointment, interim appointment, uh, to the, uh, board of assessors.
Yeah, well, welcome, Jim, I just appreciate that, I just, you know, I thought I heard the name, I was trying to put the name with the face. But, um, being on City Hall, um, it was just a great time to introduce us to the council members that don't know you, that's why I wanted to just clear it up. If you want to introduce yourself to be great.
Uh, any other councillors have any questions for city manager or interim assessor director, Jim Sullivan?
I have all the city.
Councillor Cooper.
Mr. Trump, so the assessors you have now is there until you find them, right?
We're gonna continue the search for a chief of assessing.
Mr. Sullivan did no want to be the assessor?
Right now, Mr. Sullivan is acting chief of assessing and I think we'll have some discussions with him. But at the moment, we're in agreement that we wanted to continue this. We all thought, including us all, that that was the best of it. But Jim, you're concerned, he's pretty previous.
Sure, we can discuss that a little time.
Can you maybe the chief of assessing?
This is not the moment, okay, any, any question, playing the record to the budget?
No more questions.
No more questions, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome, thank you. And Mr. Sullivan.
Our next, uh, department is personnel, employee benefits. Yes, so.
We're now at the end.
It's page twelve.
Page twelve.
Page twelve of your main budget document. Page five of the annotated and page eight of the salary list. I'll repeat those pages, the main document is page twelve. The annotated document is page five. And the salary document is page eight. We'll go through the personnel portion of the budget first and then the employee benefits after. Diane Carey, Director of HR Administration is here with us this evening. The salaries, you'll note, are down fifty-six thousand, this is a direct result of a position reduction. There is a person in HR who is retiring as of June thirtieth. And the city at this point is going to run a department with one person less for the year to see how things go. Uh, this is a, a desire to try to reduce costs, we were able to do that. And this is one of those sections. So you'll also see longevity is down fourteen hundred and that is, uh, as a direct result of this, uh, retirement as well. In the operations section, advertising is down fourteen thousand. We anticipate that the hiring will be slower in fiscal twenty-one as a result of COVID. And so this reduction for advertising to recruitment costs, uh, reflects the reduction in recruitment costs that we think we'll see. You'll also see in the center of the page, employee training. Employee training is cut in half to ten thousand dollars. That's also because without new employees coming in as frequently as they had in the past, the training options would not be needed as much. The line right below that, medical services is also slightly reduced. This is the line that has pre-employee medical screening, random drug testing, things of that sort, uh, and so with reduction in hiring, this will also, um, show some reduction. The one line that does have an increase, this is other professional consulting. There is a, uh, with the software program that is going to help with onboarding in the, uh, HR division and so the cost, estimated cost for that is about eight thousand dollars. So overall, the budget is down eighteen percent, or eighty-one thousand. Uh, do we have any questions on the HR budget? Uh, anyone have any questions? Councilor Beedel.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for dropping off this packet, it's a lot easier to keep track of what's going on. Um, my question is for the city manager. I'm sorry, I hear a lot of noise in the background. Um, miss, uh, Mister, Mister Ambrosino, uh, my question is, I mean, there's no secret that there's a lot of conversation in the neighborhood across this country about diversifying the workforce. The personnel department is at the front lines of, of dealing with this. While I understand that we're in a pandemic and we need to make some cuts, I'm curious about what investments you intend to do in this go around, so we don't have to wait a whole other year to actually get ahead of this. Um, you know, you and I have been in conversation, um, and, and looking at the staff, um, we could definitely use some more diversity and more inclusion. So I'm just curious, if we're cutting in each department, how do we actually address this issue that the council has been pretty clear that we want to address?
So I would say that I expect that there are gonna be some recommendations that are gonna come out of this community discussion that you all spoke about last night. In whatever manner that community discussion takes place. I'm not supposing to know what is gonna come out of that, I'm gonna be one of the listeners. But if what comes out of that are things like, we need to do more training for our employees, we need to hire someone to focus exclusively on diversity, then I'm going to do that and it will probably require additional financial resources that I would be prepared to recommend to the council. So this budget was submitted sorta in a different era before, uh, any of this, uh, uh, this issue became such a pressing matter, not just in Chelsea, but across the nation. You know, if I were creating this budget today, this department might look different. But I rather than try to revise it now and make some assumptions, I want to, I really do want to wait, listen, and assuming there are gonna be some recommendations that will require financial resources, I'm prepared to figure that out and come back to the council in a month or so and say, we need an appropriation to do X, Y, and Z as recommended in the community conversation.
Any?
I'm sorry, you were muted there, can you repeat?
I said, in fairness, you and I have had this conversation over the last couple of years about diversifying staff um, and getting, uh, staff that were bilingual or that, uh, reflected the community, or that were from the community. And so I, I understand that things kind of bubbled up just recently, but it's not as if though this is something that's new to you. I also know that you're talking about, and a couple of other councillors proposed it as well in the order yesterday, about diversity and implicit bias training. And so I'm curious about where, what, what department that comes out of.
It would, it, it really will depend upon whether we create some new office or whether we're going to try to fold everything into HR. It may be that in some, in some organizations, they have independent offices of inclusion and diversity. And so that's a potential model. But I don't, I'm not gonna pretend to say what the answer should be yet. I would like to really have this as part of the.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none? Okay, just, we have benefits. Oh, sorry, okay, moving on to benefits. Uh, page fifty-two. Five-two, fifty-two of the main budget document and page twenty-four of the annotated document. Page fifty-two of the main budget document, page twenty-four of the annotated documents. This is employee benefits. The first line item, health insurance, this is the major piece of this, um, budget. Down slightly by three hundred and twenty thousand, I can get into details in a minute. The health insurance reimbursement line is increased as a direct result of the PEC agreement saying that we will fund that at fifty thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-one. Coming further down the line, you'll see the Medicare line, the Medicare line is, um, at one point four-five percent of every employee's, uh, city match of every employee's Medicare deduction through payroll. This, this particular budget also has unemployment and workers' compensation benefits. We have questions on benefits? Well, I, I just figured that the city manager might want to address any of these changes and how the previous, uh, vote from last year may have impacted this number.
Yeah, I would say for those of you wondering whether that vote you took in May of two thousand and nineteen made a difference, here is it in stock terms. Because if you look at the difference between nineteen and twenty, this budget went up half a million dollars. It would have gone up the same in FY twenty-one if not for the vote that you took. Instead of going up, this amount dropped by three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So probably a shift of about eight hundred thousand dollars just on the city side. The similar savings occurred on the school side as well. This is a direct result of the vote we took that allowed me to negotiate a better PEC agreement. And this is a reflection of that. We saved probably eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, in fiscal year twenty-one because of that vote.
Councilor Taylor.
Pardon me for not knowing this, but, uh, being a new councillor, right, and being hit with COVID, I didn't get to meet with all the heads like I wanted to right in the beginning. Um, how many city employees are there?
Five hundred.
Five hundred? Yeah. And the, and the work, and the workman's comp on five hundred people is, is four hundred and fifteen thousand for that. So most of those, most of those are under clerical, right, most of those five hundred people?
Um, DPW, it depends.
How many people?
Uh, well, there's, there's a hundred and, hundred and ten in the fire department, there's a hundred and twenty.
Oh, in public safety.
Department, DPW is above fifty. Uh, those are larger departments, nine-one-one is around twenty. Um, the smallest city hall departments, um, you, you would see around ten or less. Uh, but the larger departments are included in that five hundred number.
Mm-hmm.
Schools are not, schools are separate.
I, I understand, schools are separate. Um, okay, thank you. And so with workers' comp, it's, it's not common that the city hall.
I have this in town, is that? It's full of work.
Oh, it's both part-time and part-time is five hundred, we're around three eighty or so, if it's part-time only.
Yeah, and then you have the part-time, yeah.
Um, but what I started to say is that the workers' comp is mostly the, the DPW offices or, um, some of the outside departments, not so much the office people.
Councilor Cooper.
On an average, right, how much do these people spend on, uh, workman's comp? The average person that gets hurt, right, stays on workman's comp for how long? What is the longest you ever had a person stay on workman's comp?
It, it, it all depends on the, on the person, um, we, we have someone that's, you know, we have folks that have been out for, for months, we've had, um, folks that have been out for quite a while since, um, since right after I joined. I'm sorry, do you mind if I?
Don't go down.
Um, it, it all depends, there's no magic number. At some point, we work with our workers' comp carrier to reach a settlement, but it all depends. Um, if we have someone out for a period of time, sometimes we try to get them back on light duty, so it might reduce their benefits. But there's no magic formula and then we've had people out that never come back and then we end up having settled.
Or an average year, right, how much does the city actually spend on workman's comp?
Um.
The same magnitude, four years in a row, you know, this year, this year, you know, three, four budgets, right? Does it ever decrease?
It's been pretty much about the same, it's been consistent, it's been pretty consistent.
So it's the same, it's the same amount?
Rough, yeah, and it's, it's so.
Yeah, I mean, you can see the, the, the three actual years, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, so you'll see how it fluctuates. It's three thirty-six in seventeen, four sixty-five in eighteen, three fifty-three in nineteen. Uh, the twenty number, I'm not sure that I have it with me.
Wasn't consistent, the same amount all the time?
Uh, no, I'm saying it's inconsistent because you see a jump from seventeen to eighteen, so it went from three thirty-six to four sixty-five and then back down to three fifty, so it, it varies depending upon the.
But we didn't add employees during those years. Cause I mean, that's, that's what it's based on, it's not the.
Not to the extent.
No, I mean, it's so hard to say, it could have, it could have been, it could have been a year where we had a lot of slip and falls or, yeah.
Okay, I get it, so thank you.
It's so hard to predict, yeah.
We're not paying workman's comp, sure.
Okay.
So it's the city that actually pays for that, for the self, that's why, I wonder, you know, what is, you know, the average of the, the span and the time that these.
So we have, so we have to keep it, we have only a chunk of money.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other councillors have any questions? Okay, seeing none? Victor?
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So next up we have, uh, E nine-one-one. So E nine-one-one, we are going to change twenty, uh, E nine-one-one. That's page twenty-six, page twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, it's department number two thirty, so that's the best way to go is you go, just go to two thirty. Okay, I can start doing that, yeah, so, so department two thirty.
So before we start, I just wanna, for some of you may not have been introduced officially to Steve Staffing. Steve is the new E nine-one-one director. He came over from last year and has a long history in this field. And he was thrown right into the fire, uh, in handling the, uh, COVID situation and did a tremendous job, uh, particularly with the hotel, so. He's gonna make sure he get off.
Can we get him to do something with these airplanes?
Yes. Welcome. Uh, so, let me repeat the page numbers for everyone, so we're all, um, able to follow along so well. In the main budget document, it is page twenty-six. In the annotated document, it is page eleven, continues on to page twelve. And in the salary document, the salary document is page nineteen. Page twenty-six, in the main budget document, page eleven, on the annotated version. Page eleven, on the annotated version. And page nineteen on the salary worksheet. Are we ready to go?
Hold on.
I'm sorry, what page in the annotated?
In the annotated, it's page eleven.
Okay, thank you.
And then it continues on to page twelve.
On the budget line, about pages that are at, well, twenty-one.
Twenty-six. On page, no, on that one, is that one, it's on page eleven? Okay, on, on that one, page eleven.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so the, the salaries are down fifty-four thousand dollars. This department is, this staff at eighteen positions. There are two positions that are not being filled. Turn away. So, that's, that's fine, so this department has eighteen positions funded in fiscal twenty-one. There are two positions that are not being filled in twenty-one. First of those is the assistant director, and the second is a third supervisor, a dispatch supervisor. We are funding an extra dispatcher to account for those two that aren't being filled. So there are fourteen dispatchers. The director, two emergency management dispatch supervisors. Three part-time dispatchers, and a part-time administrative clerk. So that's a total of eighteen positions. The reason for the fifty-four thousand drop is that we have two positions not funded. The, the director position and the third dispatch supervisor. You come into the other lines within the salary section, the stipends line is up three thousand. That is due to the emergency management dispatch supervisor's benefit that has been added in because of their new contract. Coming into the operations lines, there's two significant changes. Then you'll see the telephone lines are down twelve thousand five hundred. I believe that's because there are satellite phones that are no longer funded through this line. Instead, they are funded through any grant sources that our director has found. Twenty-five hundred dollar drop in the conference and travel. The director has identified some conference and travel that is needed to go to trainings, but others can wait. As a result of the request to drop some dispatches. Overall, this budget is down four percent, or sixty-two thousand dollars. Do we have any questions for the nine-one-one budget?
So, um, you say you have three positions uh lower, correct?
You, you, you. Uh, well, one, one of those is a part-time dispatcher, so it's, it's really.
Two and a half?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I have that wrong. There, there's a position reduction for an administrative assistant that we didn't fill. So instead, that was budgeted in twenty, and we didn't fill that. So you see in the bottom of the salary listing, the second from the bottom, this position reduction, twenty-one administrative assistant. That position was budgeted in twenty, it was not filled. Instead, we continued with the hourly, the person right below that, that's listed as per diem recorder. At twenty-five, FT twenty-five, so she's at about um fifteen hours a week.
Okay.
And she does the, the administrative work, the payroll, and accounts payable.
So essentially, eh, the, the difference in the salary would be the, the loss of two positions.
That's what it is, yeah.
So, I'm curious, if we have fifty-five thousand dollars, but the salary of the, um. Well, it doesn't state what the, the assistant director earned before.
Um, let me check last year's, and see if I can identify that number.
I mean, most of the dispatches are about fifty-five thousand dollars, no, I'm sorry. Uh, we have dispatch supervisors, correct? So dispatch supervisor is about seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, so some of the, some of the issue was what we funded in FY twenty, or what we appropriated in FY twenty. Had, had values that were lower for the dispatch supervisors, they're in the sixty thousand dollar range. And they were actually hired for the higher number that you see here, the seventy-nine thousand. So there was a budgeted number in fiscal twenty that was lower by about fifteen thousand each, a little bit higher than that. And the assistant director position was funded in twenty at eighty thousand dollars. So the difference between that, the eighty thousand, and the two positions that were funded at eighty instead of sixty. Is where you see the offset of the fifty-four thousand.
So what are the actual two jobs that were paid out last year? Well, what's the savings from those two?
They, well, they weren't paid out, we didn't hire an assistant director position in twenty.
Right, but you, you eliminated the assistant director, correct?
Yes.
And what was the salary, and you say it was?
Eighty.
Eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand six hundred, yes.
Was the emergency management assistant director, eighty thousand?
Yes.
And what was the dispatch supervisor now, did that also?
This, uh, was, was budgeted at sixty thousand.
Budgeted, but here you have, this, this year you have seventy-nine?
Yes.
So what was the actual then last year, was it around seventy-five?
Uh, well, they weren't hired uh at the very beginning of the year, at least not both of them. So the actual would vary, I think it was seventy-nine for one, and roughly the cost would be uh two-thirds of that.
So if we have, if we have two positions that are nearly seventy-nine thousand or sixty thousand combined, you're eliminating. And it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, then.
Well, there's a couple of other things that you have to realize in this department. So, so the emergency management director, the position was hired at a number that was higher than twenty. So that's a very difficult position to fill.
What was the difference between the previous, last year and this year?
About fifteen thousand, yeah, so from one twenty to one thirty-five.
From one twenty to one thirty-five.
And then with the dispatches themselves, um, there are variations of, of their pay depending upon what level they're at. So you have a, you have a probationary dispatcher at the low, lowest, the lowest paid level. Then you have a dispatcher in the middle, and a lead dispatcher. That, uh, I guess theoretically leads the shift, I'm, I'm not sure how that works, but um, Steve can get into that a little bit more. That's the higher, highest paid. And so on the listing, the salary listing, you'll see. The difference between the pro- probationary dispatcher, lead dispatcher, and dispatchers. There are three lead dispatchers, one probationary in this listing.
Okay.
So it's a variation, it's not just the bacon positions, it's also a combination of other things that, that were different from last year.
Um, this got nothing to do with you. In the course of the last, in the course of the last four years. We have seen this city council being asked to fund extra money one time. Because we gotta do a part-time former director, Alan Albert. We gotta keep him on for training, correct? Who asked, let's subsidize the part-time individual because we needed the assistant and so forth. And then we had a hired uh individual who came in to replace Alan Albert. So we kept Alan Albert on the books for a while. And now, we have, within two years of that. Uh, replaced that emergency management director. And we're being asked to agree to pay an additional fifteen thousand dollars. Over the previous individual who had that position. So, this is city manager, um. Uh, you have to be criticized here a little bit. Because it just seems that the city council is being asked to throw a lot of money in this department. Uh, extra money over the course of the last four years. Both as having to have the luxury of paying a former executive emergency director. Um, carrying an assistant director last year, apparently now it's not required. And now to get someone that you feel should be the person in there. Uh, have an increase of nearly, I guess off the top of my head, fifteen percent increase over the previous individual. So, I have to say, I mean, it just seems that this department is sucking up a lot of money. Uh, over the last few years. And additionally, it, it seems to be one of the, one of the departments that gets the most complaints. Um, from residents about the type of service that it gets. So, I have to ask you, you know, management-wise, what is your plan here? And how much longer, or we, you know, how much longer do we keep on throwing money at this one problem? And, cause I feel very uncomfortable with the direction that this particular department has been going in the last four years as a total.
So, all I can say is that this budget, this salary budget is less than what was proposed last year. When we came before the council last year, we proposed a structure of running this department. That included a director, an assistant director, and several supervisors. Most of the positions were unfilled, and the goal was to fill them in FY twenty. And create a management structure for this department. In the course of the year, we lost the director, we brought on a new director. And re-veined how we would manage the department. Instead of what we proposed in FY twenty under the old director. We have a new management structure with this director and two supervisors. And we added an additional dispatcher. This director, and I feel this is going to work. And it's less expensive than it was under the proposal that was presented in FY twenty. So, I thought this was a better management structure. We have two, we found two good supervisors. We ended up paying them a little bit more than what we had proposed to pay supervisors. But with them in place, we feel we can avoid having to hire an assistant director. And so I think we have a good management structure in there right now, with a good director and two good supervisors. At a cost that's less than what it was last year. And we added a dispatcher. So I think we're in, frankly, I feel the best I felt about this department since I've started. That we have a good management structure in place, and a good leader. And, you know, so far, yes, it's only been two and a half months, but. I haven't, you know, that place seems to be operating pretty well.
Okay. Counselor Cupro?
I have a question here. One is that, on the language writing, seventy-five percent is three hundred thousand?
No, 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 that's, that's not right.
Right, it's page, it's three hundred and twenty-six?
It, but you have the right page, but it's the wrong amount, it's three hundred dollars. Three hundred dollars, uh, it's, it's now gone up to seven hundred. This is a um stipend that is in the collective bargaining agreement. For someone who is bilingual gets a one hundred dollar stipend, and then it's.
Okay, and another question, another one I have here is gasoline. Are you doing, you take up the same car as the other director? Are you trying to adjust as far as he was?
Probably less, and we reduced it.
But here the amount is still the same gasoline. Three thousand seven hundred dollars. So, is that, you, you're using for gas?
That's a cross between three vehicles that are assigned plus a generator to the department.
Between all the vehicles?
Right.
Not just shop.
Yeah, all of the vehicles.
Yeah, there's.
So the other one's in the vehicle home too?
Uh, just one.
Who takes the vehicle home beside you?
Just one of them for emergency response. One other employee, and the van stays here, the new van that was purchased stays here.
So they show somebody else, I think, this vehicle?
Correct.
And the gas is shared by the city itself, we pay for the gas.
Correct.
More or less, but I'm finding it to live.
Winter for myself, Boston for the other gentleman, so not far.
And they use that much gas, three thousand seven hundred dollars a year?
Well, I, I don't know that that's, we don't know, we, we don't know whether that's gonna be the cost, um, Steve is daily new.
I think I got the right line this time, uh.
No.
So gasoline, three thousand seven hundred?
You have, you have the right line, what I'm saying is I don't know if it will be thirty-seven hundred, it's hard to tell. We, we added a vehicle, so, so there are now three vehicles in this department.
Now you have another vehicle, two vehicles, right?
We have the van, the van that was purchased for the immediate COVID need, but that's gonna continue in the emergency management structure. And then we have the director's vehicle, the, the other person would be one of the supervisors.
So how many vehicles do you actually need?
Three vehicles total.
Three?
Plus that fuel account is also used for uh generators, so if we need to fuel up the equipment.
You're using gasoline or diesel for your generator?
Diesel.
Oh, there wouldn't be gasoline, you should put diesel, diesel was there with gasoline.
Counselor, we, we fund, we fund the line as gasoline for both types of, of products. So in the, in the fire department, it says gasoline, but it is obviously diesel.
That's rough, and I don't mean to leave, but I'm saying, how much does a diesel generator use? You live in Boston now, right?
They actually use quite a bit during the hotel.
Because of electricity, would that be backup generator?
No, that's affordable, we, we tell, trailer generator, that we tell. That's part of the emergency management cash flow equipment.
So anybody expect the gas to keep going up instead of down?
So.
I'd tell them for a year, I don't think that.
I, I, I don't know that it's predictable, but the, this, the expenses thus far in gasoline for this department are at thirty-three hundred. So this is a, this is a report that I think the city manager sent to the council today. That has the expense history for fiscal twenty. And the gasoline line for this particular department is at thirty-three hundred through the end of May. So the thirty-seven hundred is.
Yeah, I would just add this, in most of the, in the large departments where we have large line items for gas, at least by DPW. We have reduced the gasoline line item because it's expectation that gasoline prices are not as high as they were a year ago. And we're all just saying, but I, I, I'm not saying it happens, but I would say that we, this was such a small number. That we didn't adjust it downward for that. Uh, so, I, I can't imagine we couldn't live with a small deduction. But it's not gonna, in overall sense, a line item of this small, of this level is not gonna make a material difference on the budget. But we did reduce the large gasoline line items to take into account the fact that. That's why I. All of them, all of them in the whole city, right? On the three major ones, DPW, police, and fire, that have large numbers for gasoline. We did an across-the-board cut to make, uh, to recognize the fact that gasoline is not as expensive as it was a year ago. We didn't do it here, if you wanna cut this by twenty percent, you'll probably survive. No more questions?
Counselor Bido?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm less concerned with the amount of gas, I'm more concerned with the vehicles that we keep getting that keep taking up space in the city. But I just wanted to say that out loud. Um, how do you say your last name, Staffier?
Staffier.
Staffier, um, nice to meet you. I just wanted to say that, um, I echo Counselor Abegyaneda's sentiments. This uh department has been semi-problematic with keeping the former director on for six months. It just seems like we keep putting money into this department, we invested into this new manager who didn't even last a year. It, it, it does raise some flags, and I just wish you luck, Mr. Staffier, this is not you. This is clearly something else in the air, but I hope that you, you're with us for the long haul, and thank you for making it through the pandemic. My question for the city manager is, as far as, I know that we had conversations in subcommittee about. Changing the, the business of nine-one-one and potentially partnering up with other cities to kinda have the E-nine-one-one base. Yeah, I'm just curious about where are we with that? And if we were to move forward with it, how would this budget look different?
So, it's probably not gonna change, we're not gonna make any enough progress in fiscal year twenty-one. That it's likely to have a material impact on this budget. At some point, we are looking to explore in an aggressive way, becoming part of a regional system. I have said for quite a while that the only way that's likely to be palatable in the city of Chelsea. Both in terms of council support and workforce support, is if I can do two things. One, accomplish that in a physical location within the city of Chelsea. And two, accomplish it in a way where. And two, accomplish it in a way where no Chelsea existing union employees are likely to be laid off. And so, I am exploring this path with those two constraints because I don't expect I could come to this council with such a plan unless I could do it with those two conditions attached to it. And so, the director who's well-versed in these regional systems knows the E-nine-one system as good as anyone in this region of the state, is talking with our counterparts in Revere and Winthrop, and we're exploring this. And at some point, I may come to the council within the next fiscal, within this this upcoming fiscal year and say, I do have a plan. It is gonna entail acquiring a piece of property in Chelsea and regionalizing with these units. But it will be in the city of Chelsea, and our union workforce will not suffer any reduction in force. Over time, that will be likely, if we do regionalize, that will be a much more efficient operation for all of us. Uh, it will probably, over time, save money, although that is not the motivating factor in doing. Because at the beginning, it will cost us money to acquire a piece of property. But I have to say this, in terms of cost of money and acquiring a piece of property, we have to get out of that building regardless of whether we regionalize. So, I'm gonna have, we're gonna have to invest in a building, whether it's acquired by purchase or do a twenty-year long-term lease. We have to do that. That building is not fit for E-nine-one-one. And really, I have wanted to get out of there by next Ju-July one. And we may not make that date, and probably won't, but we have to get out of the building. So, the question is, we have to leave and we are leaving. Are we leaving and going to a spot in Chelsea that's big enough to accommodate a regional nine-one-one? Are we going to a spot that's just gonna accommodate Chelsea? And I think my preference, my strong preference is, let's find a spot that can be a regional home. That's.
Is it, I I know, I I don't mean to trail off, but I'm just curious, the the building at DP, the DPW yard where RH White is leaving, is there an opportunity to go there?
I don't know that we've looked at that building all that carefully. I don't think so, maybe Ned can, we've looked at.
No, no, it's alright, I'm just trying to figure out how to save money here, but we don't have to get into this now. That's okay, thank you, Mr. Ambesina, thank you, Mr. Staffier.
I do wanna, I I do wanna say one more thing while we're just on this topic. Even though it will cost the city to acquire a building, if we go alone, not only do we have to pay the cost of acquiring the building, which we're gonna have to do one way or another, but if we do it as part of a region, all the additional costs, the retrofit, the new computers, the new technology, which will likely run up to three million dollars, over and above the cost of acquisition, will be paid for entirely by the state. If we go in alone ourselves, we will pay for the acquisition and pay all those costs ourselves. So, there's a financial incentive for us when we're locating in Chelsea to get a big enough building to invite other people in. But Steve could talk a little bit more about that.
I I guess I'm a little confused because you said that money isn't the motivating factor, but then you said that if we do regionalize, we do get paid three million dollars, so I'm confused.
So, there's some, yeah, there's some, this, there's a motivation for acquiring a building in Chelsea that has sufficient space to regionalize. I should, you're right, I should say that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Daniel Lopez, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counselor Calvin Brown, and then Counselor Lopez.
But I I thought Mr. Staffier was gonna say something, no?
Uh, if you, if you'd like me to, regarding regionalization?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, true statement that across the state and across the country, when you talk about regionalization of nine-one-one, the initial incentive really isn't monetary and it shouldn't be focused on the money end of it. It's more on the operational end of it to make it much more efficient uh for call-takers and radio dispatchers to operate across a geographic land that's set aside for emergency communication districts, and that's how they create them. Um, there's no question that as you regionalize on the money end or the financial end of it, that there is gonna be some incentives. One of them that stands out, for example, is the position of executive director, the director's position for the region, the first three years are paid for by the state. So, there's an incentive there for three communities, for example, in this particular case. And then on the fourth year, it becomes an assessment across the three communities, and they pay for that individual's salary. So, I just wanna give that as an example. Counselor Brown?
Um, welcome, Director. So, I got, um, just one question for Ed, and then a follow-up question for the new director. Ed, I was looking to see, how many employees did we have, um, how many, um, paid positions did we have filled for two thousand and nineteen?
Uh, do you mean twenty, fiscal twenty?
Two thou, no, two thousand and twenty, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at nineteen.
The F T E was nineteen and a half.
So, nineteen and a half, and we, there's two positions, or two and a half positions, are those included in? Were were those included in that number?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, just, just give me one minute, um. I'm not seeing the assistant.
It's not a big deal, I was just still messing around with the funding to Counselor Abegyaneda because I thought it was, we have more funding out than what we was actually reporting, so that's what I was looking at, but it's not a big issue. But for the director, um, welcome aboard, um, Counselor, um, Abegyaneda said a bit piece about it. But, um, one of the things we hear a lot from the, um, organization over there is the rudeness and also the complaint that residents get when they call in to, um, E-nine-one-one. My question to you, have you put any, any, um, thing in place to track the residents' complaint towards the dispatcher?
I have, Counselor, thank you. Um, I have, uh, as recent as this past week, a memo went out to all the dispatchers regarding how they handle both emergency calls and service calls, calls for service. Uh, the latest example, fireworks calls that have been happening. Um, so I I took care of that through a memo, I talked to them individually, um, as well as my supervisor that oversees the nine-one-one operation. One of the things that's going forward that we're putting in place as part of this new dispatch software is they're gonna be retrained. Part of the software provides them with some procedures, um, for each type of call, including service calls. So, as we go along and train in the new software, they're all gonna get retrained on, um, basically handling customer, customer, uh, handling, if you will, um, for the folks that do call up. We do see it more, and it seemed more to the industry on those service-type calls versus an emergency call. They do very well, they do quality control, we check the tapes. They do very well during emergency calls, um, that require a transfer for medical assistance from Cataldo and so on. On the service type of calls, um, the example again, given the fireworks or a barking dog type of call, uh, sometimes those calls do get stacked up waiting for resources from the police department, for example, or maybe even if it's a fire type of service call. Uh, but we put something new into effect this past week, uh, for all the dispatches. So, uh, we should see a change for the better.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, but, you know, as the chair of the subcommittee on public safety, um, we will be, um, you know, if we ever get a chance to get back within the next two months or a month, um, we would really like for you to come before the committee and explain the procedure, the training, and your expectation because that's something that will help us when we hear these, um, comments out in the community.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I had one more thing I just realized I wanna mention on this budget. Uh, so, last year, we had proposed a increase in the administrative staff for this, uh, department. We had increased the administrative assistant, I think, to thirty hours from a, a, a small number of hours. And we never ended up filling that position during the course of the year, particularly in the latter part of the year, DPW took over, kind of paying, doing a lot of the administrative work for this department. And it especially occurred when Steve DePaun was spending a lot of time at the hotel and getting that all up and running. And so, what we decided for this budget was, let's minimize the administrative staff here. We'll be, and so, we're in the, in the DPW budget, we are gonna replace Booba's position with a full-time business manager, and that person is not only gonna do the Booba job, she will, he or she, will also do the administrative work for E-nine-one-one. So, the only ten hours a week that are in here for the administrative person is for very specific, uh, transcript-related work that is unique to E-nine-one-one. But all of the purchasing and procurement and all of the normal paperwork that's done in E-nine-one-one will be done at DPW. We were able to do that this spring, it worked well, we're gonna continue.
Can I just ask one question?
Uh, Counselor.
Just, just a follow-up on the, just a quick follow-up on the, on the, on the fireworks. How, how many calls about fireworks have you gotten in the last two weeks?
I'd have to look to give you the exact number. I know that one particular night, um, there was probably close to twenty-four calls in a three-hour span, two to three-hour span. Um, and I know that was a hot-button night. Um, I, I spoke to one of the residents too to ensure her confidence in our services moving forward. She was very happy with that, very glad. Um, but I know there was one particular night, but I I could take a look to find out. Um, and we know this season.
If you could get that, if if you might get that for me, just, just so, trying to kind of figure out exactly what's, what's going on and, and, uh, and, uh, what the, what the public response is to this. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And welcome. And, and, and for the record, I don't mind spending fifteen percent more on your salary as long as you can work all this stuff out.
Absolutely, I will.
That'll, that'll be very much worth it.
Uh, Counselor Daniel Lopez has been waiting patiently, you're.
Thank you, uh, welcome from Chelsea. And, um, my question is, I, I new van today. Why we need a new van, and who's using it, why we using it back?
So, the van was purchased prior to me, uh, arriving in the position. My understanding that there was an immediate need during the COVID-nineteen operation uh for transporting folks around the city. We ended up using the van successfully for the sixty-day operation at the hotel, and that's how we transported the folks to and from, uh, residents, hospitals, appointments, and so on. So, now we have full ownership of the van, and it's part of, uh, emergency management program.
Yeah, my, my other question is, uh, uh, the, as Counselor Abegyaneda and, uh, who else said something about the rudeness? Oh, Counselor Calvin Brown. I, I actually have heard complaints about the people being rude when they answer the phone. And when the person doesn't speak the language, that is even, even worse. What are you gonna try to do to help the Latino community, because it's the majority of this city?
Again, that was addressed in the memo that I, um, just sent out this week regarding those type of calls. Um, and it included in that memo, uh, was again, customer service. Uh, with our last new hire, we've increased to, I think, over half a dozen dispatches that are bilingual, uh, and they do work very well in the room together when we have a language barrier. Uh, but moving forward with this new training, I can assure you that that rudeness is gonna expire.
Okay, uh, you, you said you hired somebody, somebody who was Latino, but, uh, what happens if I have a problem and I don't speak the language in a call? They automatically speak in Spanish, or they just act like they don't understand Spanish? And also, they, they are getting a stipend by getting hired to do this job. How come they don't speak the language? Maybe that, something, I don't know, you just can't, oh, but, uh, maybe there's something that we can do, and, you know, if they, you know, if they know that someone has trouble speaking the language, they should help them right away.
Right, so, so aside of the individuals that are bilingual that work there, um, the whole nine-one-one process has a bilingual line or a language line um that they can opt in to help out with the conversation. And I will ensure that that's being used when needed, and that will help with the language barrier of dozens of languages.
All right, that's my question, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Any other counselors have any questions? Counselor Robinson?
Yeah, my question, Tom kinda alluded to it, uh, because Tom and I met last year. I had some concerns with the previous director that I felt that he had been here for a while, had people working underneath him. I don't think that he was training him for, these local people have been at the nine-one-one for years to be able to move up into supervisor position. So, what is your plan on working to make sure that these people get trained and are able to move up on positions, other than being able, looking to go regional? Wanna make sure that these people are up to stop fast where they need to be.
So, uh, the immediate thing I did when I, when I came here was, uh, restructured. So, functionally, I restructured the organization in which the two supervisors, I split. Um, Nicole oversees nine-one-one operations and administration, and Anthony oversees emergency management and field services under my direction management. Uh, below Nicole, if you were to look in a virtual org chart, uh, we have lead dispatches that are in charge of the shift, and then, of course, the regular dispatches, probationary folks, and then part-time, as Ed explained in the budget. Um, so that's overall what the org chart looks like. Uh, moving forward, if we stay singular, we don't regionalize, uh, the whole, I would like to grow, uh, within the department there to ensure that there are positions. Um, I need a couple more lead positions, so that'd be something I'd be asking for in the future. And I'd probably wanna grow Anthony and Nicole into, um, some more of a senior position. Um, if we regionalize, that actually explodes into much more opportunities uh at all types of positions. Dispatch, radio dispatching, call-taking, um, supervision, assistant director positions, quality control. You know, with three communities coming together, it opens up incredible opportunities for the employees.
Thanks, that's my concern.
Um, just a follow-up question, going for future, I want a clarification. Um, as you handled the hotel situation with COVID-nineteen, if there is a fire in the city of Chelsea and there is displacement, you say a multifamily, and you have upwards of twenty-plus, or even as low as just one family, or if there is, um, we've had situations where a building is deemed, um, unsafe. What is the procedure for the city of Chelsea to relocate and assist those families um in getting shelter in the short term during emergency? Will that be your coverage, or, uh, what is the command? Is it the fire department, is it your department? Or are we just going to let Red Cross handle it? Because I was under the impression that, um, the whole point of the emergency director is that he would, or she would, I mean, um, be in charge of that and take, handle that just like you handle right now the COVID-nineteen, uh, situation.
So, excellent question, sir. So, um, I plan on working very closely with the fire chief for those types of incidents. And what I would, um, take care of is definitely the displacement of citizens, where I would work very closely with Red Cross and even Salvation Army. So, as I have in the past in my career, working for state emergency management, uh, working with communities with large incidents. Those two agencies, those voluntary agencies are key into displacement, for instance. If for some reason Red Cross or Salvation Army could not assist for some odd reason, um, and then sometimes there may be incidents or numbers of people, uh, where it's a very special case, then I'd work obviously closely with Tom and Ned in asking if we could, um, you know, utilize a hotel, for example, for the short term for the folks and deal with, um, the funding end of it and reimbursements and so on, depending on type, a type of incident is. What I would like to do moving forward, um, is build some relationships with some local hotels, and that's a, um, best practice, if you will, in the industry for emergency management so that I can go to them, you know, at two in the morning, for example, and say, I've got this issue, can we take care of this? So, that is my, uh, future. So that is my uh future plans to build some relationships. Uh, but yes, I would work closely with the fire chief at the incident and then take care of the displaced residents.
So what is the standard operating procedure? When and if there is a fire or displacement, what is the protocol? Because I'm confused as to whether it's, again, in, in answering, you say you're willing to work with those agencies. But what I'm willing, what I really want to understand is who in fact is the one the families need to work with? And is it us or, and if not, why can't it be first here and so forth? So can you tell me in the emergency world, uh, what is the standard operating procedures that we can, that we have here or what other communities do that is different?
It's pretty much common across the state, um, again, in my experience, but it's emergency management is first. So working very closely with both police chiefs and fire chiefs during whatever disaster or incident there is, I would take care of the coordinating of resources and logistics. And part of that would be displacement of uh families and residents. Uh, we definitely take that task off their shoulders. So I, I mean, I haven't seen it written anywhere as, as far as it being an SOP in the city. Um, but I, I, I know what my role should be, or is, as far as being the emergency management director. But a big part of that role during an emergency or disaster is being a coordinator. Um, and I would do just that and make sure that I coordinate amongst our city agencies, the external agencies, and, and make sure those folks obviously have a place to go.
Okay. It's just that I, you know.
Yeah, I, I think.
You know, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but it just seemed that the emergency director in the years that I've, uh, I've observed has not been the quarterback, so to speak, on them. And begs, and that seems to be something that begged to be needed here. Um, and it's been more of a, okay, Red Cross arrived and, but, you know, they're not local, so. Counselor Robinson, correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, I think what you're driving at, now Red Cross comes, now to give you a card. Then now it's up to you to figure out, trying to find a place. So I guess Roy is trying, what would be your role in that situation? I get burnt out, they come, they give me a card for me to go find a hotel. Are you gonna step in and coordinate that or are you just gonna let people?
No, I'd step in and coordinate that. Absolutely. Okay. All right.
So let me just say that one of the goals in hiring Steve was that I thought I had someone who would be a good collaborator. But this issue of how are we gonna deal with these kind of situations? Unfortunately, got put to the back burner because he walked in and we needed to operate a hotel. And I haven't even had time to sit with him yet and talk through some of these. Here's how I'd like these operations to happen. Uh, and it, it's just that we've been so COVID-focused for the last two months. Now, as we're just starting to come out, we're gonna, we're gonna need to have these conversations with Steve in the room, mostly with the fire chief in the room, and s, and make sure we're all on the same page of these procedures. But it would be my intent that in those circumstances, Steve would be the one coordinating the response. Unfortunately, we don't have an easily accessible shelter. We do have that church where we can use it in an emergency, but it's not really an official shelter. So keeping people there overnight is really problematic for lots of different reasons. Uh, and so, you know, in the worst, the last resort, we could do that. Um, it's one of the reasons why we decided not to try to stand up a shelter anywhere in the city in our municipal buildings or there when we were trying to deal with this COVID isolation. We decided a better choice was commandeering a hotel. But this is the right conversation. Just unfortunately, I have another chance to happen with Steve yet further.
Any other counselors? Follow-up questions? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you very much. It was nice to meet you.
Thank you, Mr. Staffier.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Mr. Staffier. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Yes. So next up is the HHS division. There, there are, uh, page forty-one of the main budget document, page forty-one of the main budget document. Page nineteen. Actually, I would suggest page twenty because only the header is on page nineteen. So if you go to page twenty, page twenty is the start in the annotated budget of HHS. The salary listings begin on page twenty-eight. So I'm gonna repeat those pages.
I'm sorry if I'm done. I need you to watch.
Oh, I'll, I'll pull my mask down.
You're gonna need to change your.
You gotta look at them so I can read your, like, twenty.
Oh, so, okay. So it's page forty-one in the main budget document.
Forty-one here. Forty-one.
Page twenty of the annotated document.
Twenty in this one.
This one?
Yep.
This one?
Twenty. Twenty. Two, zero.
And in the salary sections, it begins on page twenty-eight. I'm sorry, page twenty-six.
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 I'm talking fast. I'm, I'm kind of dead right, right side.
Oh, all right.
I don't need you.
I told him. Okay, someone? Do you have them?
I, I got it all now. Thank you very much.
All right. So, um, Mr. President, I'd suggest there are six divisions in HHS. The administrative division, the health officer division, elder services, veteran services, library, and uh culture and recreation. I, I suggest we handle those one at a time. And get questions on each. Luis Prado is here. He's the HHS director and represents all of those departments. We are on page forty-one. You'll notice, uh, I'm not gonna go into the salaries because we've talked about those before in earlier budgets. The contract services line in the operations section is down a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's primarily due to two things. The first is the youth navigator position is not funded in this FY twenty-one proposal. And the second is that there's a consolidation of two contracts related to CAPPET, which is reducing some costs. The other items that are funded are listed in the annotated budget and we can get into more detail on what those are if you'd like. So that's the major thing. If you turn to the, or look to the bottom of the page, it's down sixteen percent over last year, or a drop of a hundred and seventeen overall, a hundred and seventy thousand. Most of that is in the contract services line in the operations section.
So this is where we fund the navigators program and all of the wraparound services that go along with that. And it's in this line.
So can you explain how you, you eliminated the youth navigator? What is that?
So the youth navigator was a position that was, uh, that the Chelsea Cooperative had. It was an effort to try to better engage youth in the community. But it just wasn't the contract that I felt I could justify in a year when we were having so many cuts. So, uh, so it got eliminated. And the CAPPET, CAPPET had two contracts uh that they were operating last year. One was a social services contract where they were assisting ISD. And the other was a social services contract where they were assisting uh the downtown folk. And they were two separate contracts. We sat with CAPPET, uh, not sat, we conferred with CAPPET by phone several times over the course of the last few weeks to figure out, was there a way to get the same services, but on a consolidated basis? They had some resources, they were able to tap into coming from the Federal Care Act. And we agreed that we could revamp and consolidate those two specific contracts that totaled, uh, I think sixty-five and eighty, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and reduce them to around ninety and still get exact, just about the same levels of services. So we have an RFP going out, uh, for, uh, the start of July one. And we should be able to consolidate all of those services into one. So that's, uh, that explains the reduction of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Uh, Counselor DeMali, we don't?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I am, because we are in a pandemic and because we just really need to really look at the way that we're operating City Hall, I am going to just express outright my huge disappointment with this department. In the middle of a pandemic, I have seen planning and development, I have seen the city manager's office, and I have seen DPW respond to a pandemic serving food. I don't know what we're doing, but I'm a little concerned that I haven't seen any leadership in this department. And I don't know what this means moving forward. If we get a, are we still out of the first wave? Will we get a second wave? What are we doing to ma, I see other public health departments in other cities track data, statistics, host farmers markets, more includes, more involved in the community to promote the health and safety and well-being of folks. We know that we're disproportionately affected um by environmental factors. There are so many different things that are against us. And I do not understand why we haven't built up this department to be able to really, really guide us through some of these things that we're facing head-on that is literally costing the lives of our residents. So what I want to know is why this department, um, it looks like there's a cut to it. And while I get it, we can complain about thirty-seven hundred dollars for gas. We can complain about fifteen thousand dollars on a salary for emergency management. I would invest all the money in the world into this department. I would be willing to do that if it meant that we were actually putting the residents of this community first. And I don't think that we have. I really need someone to explain to me, like, I'm a three-year-old, as to why.
Um, either the city manager or the director of county units first wants to reply to that?
Well, I would like to understand better the, the, the question. I think I'm going to try to interpret what you said. There are two issues. You mentioned about lack of leadership. Uh, I am the leader of the department. And if that's what you mean, I can, so you are before on all the activities that we get engaged. Uh, uh, in terms of public health, we did what we have to do. We cannot be sharing information with you or anybody else for any other purpose because we need to protect the population and we need to protect, uh, the fact that people have a right of privacy and we have to have a, a, a right that, to defend that right uh because of the stigma and because how this is that is news. But yes, we have been tracking, uh, the situation. And, uh, actually, the public health has been submitting, Paula has been submitting uh with the help of the state, reports of, uh, the number of cases, cumulative, cumulative cases. My gra, my background, one of the things that I did in my life was to work in Central America, uh, controlling infection diseases. Uh, I have a experience and a degree from Harvard on epidemiology. And I know what has to be done from that perspective. From the perspective of services, we always have been working with agencies in the city. And it's great that they have maintained that engagement and responded to the city manager's uh request for help. Uh, DPW has a function under, uh, emergency management. Once, what, what we learn in emergency management, which I also have been participating in planning since September eleven, I mentioned this at a meeting, uh, in two thousand and one, every year we renovate plans from the perspective of public health. Uh, there are different disciplines, things are assigned to different disciplines. And, uh, that has been, in terms of building a department in the traditional way, that has changed a lot. Most work is based on outsourcing and that began years ago. Uh, I think it's time to reevaluate the whole situation and see how things can be improved. Uh, the whole idea of partnerships is critical. The problem is how those partnerships are really asymmetrical or they are leveled. And, uh, it's, we have been discussing this for years and years and working together. Right now, I came from admitting with the Chelsea Board of Health, which had difficulties technically because my computer wasn't working too well. So I, 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 I think we have gone within the limits. Some work that is worse, uh, uh, recognizing or respecting, not recognizing, but respecting. Uh, in terms of how the department can evolve in the future, I know there are a lot of ideas and a lot of the people are circulating ideas, but that's great. It's not a political game. It's a reality. It has to be, uh, uh, the understanding of how we can intervene in improving the quality of life and the well-being of the population and to get everybody aligned to do that. And I think that is coming.
Mr. Prado, I just want to be clear. We, I respect you. This is not personal. Uh, you are one of the very few department heads that reflects our community, that's bilingual. I know about your history. I want you to know this isn't personal. This is about us being in the middle of a pandemic and me feeling as if though we were just not prepared for it. This is about me seeing more people in orange shirts or people from the planning department being out there than I'm hearing anything from public health. So I, I want you to know that this isn't personal, but how can we be more innovative to expand that department? And so I feel that, yeah, we outsource, we see the contracts, we outsource, you know, we outsource through, we depend on MGH. But that doesn't excuse us from doing what we should be doing as a public health department. I, again, I just want to emphasize that it's not personal, but that this is about the residents of Chelsea and the public health crisis that we're in right now.
So one thing I do want to say is that we have spent a fair amount of the last couple of years trying to engage more regionally on public health issues. So we created this non-staffed public health collaborative with Revere and Winthrop. And the great benefit of that collaborative was that it got us really engaged with the uh healthcare community in this region, the Beth Israel, the MGH, to a larger extent than we had been. And I thought that really played itself out well in the COVID epidemic because I thought there was a great deal of collaboration in that effort along with these, uh, these healthcare providers. I think we've worked really well with them. And so from their response on the health side, I, you know, the, the, this, this pandemic had an incredibly disproportionate impact here in Chelsea. But in terms of the way in which the city partnered with the healthcare agencies in the region and in the area, in terms of operating that hotel in Revere and just in terms of the amount of testing we were able to do, I thought there was a great deal of, uh, success in the way we dealt with this from a public health perspective.
There, there was. But my point is, you're not the public health department. The planning and development is not a public health department. DPW is not a public health department. And neither is Luli or Kate from your office. So then what, I mean, I understand what you're, what you're saying and I appreciate, I believe in the power of collaboration. And it was beautiful the way that we responded. But what specifically did this public health department do besides Paula giving us numbers daily to really highlight some of the underlying health conditions, conditions that were always prevalent? Or to keep track of what was happening during the pandemic and, and getting information out to the community? And how can we learn from this and move, and move in a better direction? What investments are we putting in to make sure that this public health department is actually equipped to deal with a public health crisis excluding DPW city manager and planning development and outside, and outside network?
So that would require a different model than the city has had with sort of a one-person public health department. I mean, we have one public health nurse and we have one director. There, there isn't a real public health department here. It's a one-man band. And so in that effort, we don't have a lot of public health resources as an individual city to bring to the fore. There's no question.
And maybe that's, maybe we're setting up Mr. Prado to be in a very uncomfortable situation. Uh, maybe he's being set up then. How do we improve? How can we look at this differently? I just, you know, this pandemic hit everybody and everybody is trapped so thin. You're seeing, then, you're seeing nonprofits and people just running around trying to, like, we're in the mid, we're in the thick of it. then, you're seeing nonprofits and people just running around trying to, like, we're in the mid, we're in the thick of it. And so I'm concerned that we're not equipped. And so then, what, what does it mean? How are we reflecting on the work that we've done thus far to learn from this?
Well, it, it would require a different model than this city and most other cities around.
I, I, I haven't interrupted you. I, I, I believe, may, sorry for doing this, but I believe this is a conversation that is going to require a, a lot of thinking and evaluation of what has been done, and that's what I've been proposed. I think there is a need to do an after-action assessment, that is typical of emergencies, and, and see what can be done. I personally don't think that locally or regionally, or as part of the Region Four A B, we were ready for something like this. And I think public health is very different from clinical services, it's very different from social services. Health services is trying to combine this. We have been participating in planning. I've been involved with Beth Israel, Magiera, particularly with this Israel that has been really responsive, I think, in many ways that they were not in the past. And there are a lot of things coming. But then, there is a need to clarify. We expected that, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm trying to say also is that I don't believe that the way this has been moving at a local, regional level, it, it was the most appropriate to, to the emergency. But this is the opportunity to really get deeper into this and see how this can be. I agree, there must be things that can be done better.
I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Prado. This is, again, is not personal. It's just, we, sometimes we need to have self-conversations so we can get better, and I appreciate you being open to that, and I really hope that the City Manager will invest the necessary resources into this department because to me, it's clear that we need it.
Thanks. Any other councilors? Councilor Cooper.
Mr. Prado, your department has how many functions besides just being what we do? What other fall within you? Does the veterans affair fall within you? Does D fall within you? I mean, your department has, it's not, because you only miss so many people on this page that he says, right? But your department is really a bigger department than it really is, right?
There are six divisions, yes. Six divisions within this, within this department, and you named them off, of, of the Health Department, the Administration, which we're talking about now. And then there is the Public Health Department, and then the, the Elder Services, the Veterans Services, Library, and Cultural Affairs. So there are six.
So, with all that you have, Mr. Prado, you do a good job considering all that you have. You have a lot of your place, but through the years that I've known you, right, your department has always been fair that I see it through the nurse that you have. Like Tom said, going back to what he says, you don't have all the actual resources that you need to become a better department. According to what the City Manager says, you don't have the things that make you a great department. The job you do is a great job with what you have. But I'm saying, what would you need for you to become a great department? Like, the council with all ones. And what would the City Manager happen to give you for the human services downstairs, for the department, for the nurse, to get better, to become from this experience that we had with this pandemic? God forbid we would ever need something like this again. And would your department be more better than it is now? Could you do more, if you had more?
Well, uh, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, once again, I think, there has to be part of a conversation, and there has to have a plan. We need to, to, to look at this in, in ways that we, we can start looking for evidence in the direction of, that we want. I, let, let me try to be direct. We did have a big department, and through the years, the mode of delivering services had been changing. Now is a moment to see if the model that we are using works. We do have a big department still, but, but it's been into all of these different areas. In the area of public health, we had fourteen nurses. We, and, and we agreed to transfer the nurses to the School Department. We have tobacco control based in the city, and now we are part of a regional agreement, which works. Emergency service, also, we began to develop internally, and then we became part of Region Four A B. You know, we were connected to Boston and to, so there have been changes that have to be looked at because we were accommodating to the changes in, in the environment over there, you know, the social environment and how people do business in, in, in these fields. So now might be a time to think, and, and maybe it's possible that the regional direction that some people are proposing, but I personally don't think that there is evidence that that is going to work until that is also improved. For example, we gave, I have access directly to the state and to all the functionaries, and they provide information. But now, how to share that information, we try to do it on a regional basis, and it's from the region that the information comes down. But I receive it even, even before it gets to the region because of the old connections. So how that can be made more efficient i- is an issue. You know, so we all get the same information at the same time. We don't have to wait a day to get the information later, things like that. So I, it, it's a lot of things that have to be fine-tuned, but there is also the bigger issues of what else can be done, and for that, I, I, I think there is a need to see.
Well, through your, through your experiences, right, that you went through this for a while, right? What do you think would make a better, like, council, how would you make a better department? More, your department is great as it is now. What I'm, what I'm asking you is, could you improve? What would you need to become even better in what?
Uh, I believe we have to strengthen the understanding uh, among the different agencies and to develop a common purpose and a common goal, and that goal has to be dealing with the social determinants of health that finally people are understanding why. Dealing with how the environment, not only the physical environment, but the social environment, the policies, the politics, how even people in politics relate to each other, how that affects the city. How do you can create a common, a consensus? How do you have sort of a rational dialogue where emotions are understood? We, we cannot leave emotions aside, but we have to be rational and, and, and plan and develop objectives. So there is a lot, but, but I don't think, you know, it's, I was trying to say, it's not defensive. It's saying, within the context of what things were before the emergency, we were really succeeding in keeping things, working in a very efficient way. And, and, and that is something to be proud of. That is part of public health too, how to efficiently you, you can manage things to be effective. And I think we were going to be affected, but the pandemic has created a very different situation.
So, to Councilor Vito's point, two things. One, I get an idea, I think, what she was trying to ask. And what the goal are, what the, what her goals are here. And correct me if I'm wrong, but before anything, I do want to recognize through not offending Councilor Vito, that there were parts of your department that were at the front line. And when I say that, I can thank, I want to thank.
Tracy Nowicki. Yeah, I agree.
You know, the Elder, the Elder Affairs Office and their, their food program for the Elder Department, and what they were able to do. Uh, I'm sure that, um, the Veteran Affairs Officer, Francisco Toro, was very busy with the situation that was going to closure's home and lockdown and the amount of information. In their regards, I think the library, I think we can all agree that they were trying to keep all the children entertained remotely. They're coming up with some sort of ideas of reading by video and such, and I think the Rex, the Culture and Recreation was doing that also. But to, on Councilor Vito's point, where I think she was heading, is that if anything, this situation, the pandemic, highlighted the health disparities that are in our city and continue to be, and, and how the residents suffered because of the negative health impacts that continue to go on and have been going on for years. And I think that if one was to look at your department, the one board or the one, you know, entity that would have to address that, and is, and I want to remind everyone, is the mo- one of the most powerful boards is the Board of Health. If there's anyone that can shut anyone down in a, with just one simple vote, it is the Board of Health. If there is anyone that can stop the sale of anything going on, if they wanted to vote this ban all cigarette sales in the City of Chelsea, they could do so. So, I want to recognize that we do, there is a board that exists that's probably more powerful than the City Council. The question is, what role do we want them to play? And how can we use them to advocate for what is going on, and we now recognize our, is going on to, in our community? And maybe that's the direction, or that's the focus that maybe this discussion should be. Uh, because if there's going to be any changes, real changes, to address some of the issues that are going on here, maybe that might be the vehicle to go through besides a, a look at the model of what this department is. But, um, Councilor Taylor.
So, and please, anyone, correct me if I'm wrong here. I'm just trying to get a proper understanding and putting, put this particular situation in its proper context. It seems to me that over the years, not just the, uh, your department, but many departments in the City of Chelsea have been, say, supplemented by a variety of nonprofits in the city, correct? So that services, or you work in collaboration with other agencies that, that will provide services to the community. So, what I hear is, and that's a historical thing, where the leadership is not necessarily responsible for what went on before and how that situation developed and how things are run today. I think, uh, the point was, was that we need to rethink this, and, and my, my, my question is, is that if you're going, if you want to have a more encompassing department, which is going to be a lot more expensive, a lot more, what is the effect then on the nonprofits that are already existing, providing valuable services? You know, are we going to be, you know, doubling up things, or how, how are we going to make this situation work? Because I know that I'm in meetings with, you know, Healthy Chelsea and different, you know, people like that who, who are working very hard to, you know, make sure that people in Chelsea have enough to eat, are eating healthy foods, all the, all the different things that I think Councilor Vito was, was talking about, or some of what she's talking about. So, you know, I don't think it's quite fair for criticism necessarily, but the point's well taken. Do you want to reimagine this type of thing for the city? And does it make sense to do it when we kind of have a system already with nonprofits adding so much to the studio? So, I mean, I think this is not an easy thing to do, and so, you know, I, 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 I appreciate the point about thinking about these types of things. But I don't think that it's an obvious thing that we should have been doing this because, you know, we have a system that kind of evolved over time, and it seemed to be working, and as far as the pandemic goes, I don't think anybody was prepared for the pandemic at any level. So, you know, and, 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 you know, maybe we should have been, but we weren't. Hopefully in the future, we'll learn from our mistakes. That's usually the human experience.
But I think what Councilor Vito was pointing to is, we have, right now, as you say, outsourced the responsibilities that we had once, or some public health departments have in a bigger city.
Correct.
And that is, for example, City of Boston does not outsource its summer jobs program. City of Boston does not outsource, um, environmental fights as it may do with green leaves. City of Boston may not, uh, outsource a, its food program through, you know, the healthy network and does an intake. So, so it's a, it's a good point to say that we're not actually missing it, that we do have it in place, however, it's not within the department. So the real question should be, do we want to intake all those outsources which was a, would, you know, and take on the overhead? Um, and with that means, again, that's a real strategic cost that previous city manager said, you know what, I don't want to have to take care of those pensions and healthcare plans and so forth. It was a strategic decision to pay outsiders so that we wouldn't have those departments sit.
So that's, that's my point.
There's the discussion, you know, in lieu of saying maybe his department doesn't have that, all those, um, you know, services. But to your point, we kind of do. So maybe the discussion is, as Councilor Vito pointed out, maybe we have it and decide whether or not it's inside or continued outside.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you saying that. I also want to add that even if we could serve as a hub where we can get statistical data, we outsource recovery and addiction to CAPPY, Environmental Subdegree. Give us some data, let us know what's going on, monthly reports. There's no way that we have the highest rates of asthma and cancer and, and some, some of the highest rates in the state, and we're not constantly getting reports from our public health department. Or the, some of the living conditions in which people are living that really go against the health code. I mean, I just think that overall, we could be doing a little better, and, and it's clear to me that we've been under, we've been stripping from this department over the years. So I think that we really need to do some serious reflection. That, that's all. And I, I thank you, Councilor Vito, for translating for me.
I, I, I just want to add, I agree with what Councilor Vito just said. I think statistics are one of the most important things that we can do because it, it, it shows us where we are. It's a measuring stick, and as a former academic, I, I, I like statistics so I can figure out what is actually going on. I know it's difficult to collect it, and we're not Boston. We don't have those types of resources. And so I think that there is a practical aspect to all of this too. And it doesn't mean that we can't have a conversation about how to reimagine something to be, you know, more inclusive and more effective. But I think we have to be, uh, you know, uh, realistic about what actually could be done in the City of Chelsea.
True, very briefly. Yes, in order for you to be able to have a sense of what programs can work and how to do that, you need to have a health and its assessment. And those assessments are done. Gravely, we didn't have the influence that we had on those assessments that we had before, and they are done by mostly large institutions. Every institution has to, the hospital. And they are available. All those numbers are available. CAPPY has assessments. Magiera has those, has assessments. Uh, Beth Israel has those assessments. We participate in discussing what should be included. And for many years, we have been looking at this from And for many years, we have been looking at this from both different angles. The concept of social determinants and health disparities is something that we began discussing nearly 15 years ago. I have all those documents. My office is a little bit crowded because I keep records of everything I have done in the last 20 years. I've been here 20 years, maybe too long. Not too long. I, I think I have, being attached to a community for many, many reasons. And, and I do enjoy what is on in Chelsea. Yeah, but maybe it's a matter of being more specific in terms of goals, objectives, and ways of measuring that. For people to accept that responsibility. If I say that I'm going to do this, we, we can prove that it was on. Here is the information. It doesn't have to be a complex report. In, in terms of learning where we are, there is information. In terms of how these programs impact the community, we, we might improve that too, you know, getting better statistics back. In terms of the model that has been developed, it's universal. This is part of something that began many years ago. And I don't think we can go back to more direct services by government at this moment. Because it's universal. It's, it's gradually things where our source all around the country are all different levels. So that is another conversation. But in terms of what can be done with the resources that are available and how to fine tune, what are going to be done, then I think that is a conversation that is very important. I welcome that you initiated this, Damali, the City Council. And Tom, also, part of the concern is how to use resources at a larger level. The problem is how those resources can be fine tuned on the needs of the particular community.
And maybe, maybe just if we, you know, if, if there's a simple way, and you said the numbers are out there with the various, you know, if there's some way to kind of collate that information for leadership so we can see and, and access that readily to, to find out. I, I mean, I don't know if that's possible or practical or, 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 or how. But I think, I think that's more what Counselor Vido was talking about. And surely that would be helpful for, you know, the political leadership of, of the, of the city, you know, to, to have access to that type of information.
It is.
You can get it. I always got it from them. The information out of the cities, you know, you can go to Mr. Prado. When I first started, I went to him and I asked him and I said, Mr. Prado, can you tell me what is the condition of residents? And I went and he gave me all the statistics and numbers that I needed. And I think the one time, Mr. Prado, we were brought in, the state nurse, remember Leo, for that particular problem that we had? And the state nurse came in and helped with it. Mr. Prado, the one downstairs, and gave funds. Mr. Rosino wasn't here then, but Mr. Ash was here then. And what you're asking, you can get any time.
Get back on the budget. Yep, we get, we get that. Counselor Robinson.
Kind of, kind of twofold, going back to one of the questions I was asked.
Yeah, I know, I know we're talking about a lot of expectations of what's expected of the office. But tonight we're discussing the figures of the budget and we have yet to discuss those matters.
Counselor, we're getting there.
Thank you.
Get back, get, get back to, get back to the numbers. I think what people aren't hearing or seeing is what actual numbers are coming out of your office. And, and one of the things that he mentioned is about the privacy thing. I guess if you know today, there was an incident where a NFL football player was tested positive. And they put his name out there. And he's actually pissed that he was identified as being positive. Well, Coleman, I know we can share names, but you can share statistics. I'm going to be interested in the report that you put together as to what effect that the virus had in Chelsea. You know, particularly interested in what effect the food lines might have had in regards to the spikes that we had during the virus. No, I think those are some things that you can share with us and that man.
I have some information I can give you guys tomorrow if you want. But we, we just started meeting with the Board of Health at five o'clock today. And, and people are very interested in doing the same, the board. So, and the information is available. It's a matter of sort of time and the, and the pressure we are under. Yes, I, I think that's something important.
Thank you, Mr. Prado. We'll move on to the elder affairs.
Oh, well, the public health officer is the next 511.
511, okay.
Very straightforward, one person. This is the public health nurse, the one person that Tom spoke of. The medical supplies is the largest operational number, the $6,000 that funds blue vaccines, needles and gloves, and those types of things. So that's, do you want me to ask positive questions or continue?
I noticed that the actual numbers are almost a third of that. Is there a reason why we have the three times that number? Or is that you have 12, you know, 1,200, almost 1,300 in 2017, 2,200 in 2018? But 2021 is up to 6,000. Is that because of the recent situation or?
I don't think so. That, that line, contract services and.
Medical supplies.
Oh, sorry, medical supply.
Line 5549000.
Okay, 1222. Let me check what's happening in, in fiscal '20. I can give you a better idea of what we spent so far there.
I can explain a little bit also what the medical supplies are, what is it for. Part of the obligations of the public health department is to assure that certain number of people get the flu shots every year, the seasonal flu shot. Because if you get a number, a close to 100 people that get the vaccine, that has sort of a multiplier effect. That does 100 people that are not going to be transmitting the flu. In a case of an emergency where you have a larger, a, a more virulent influenza transmission, then you have to vaccinate more people. If there is an emergency for which the state declares that we have another pandemic, but now we have the vaccine, then it's a matter of how to structure emergency clinics and, and to provide as many vaccines as possible. I think Paula was looking here at the possibility of having to do more vaccinations. And most of the cost of this is the vaccines. The kind of vaccines that we have.
Yes, and I can tell you the expenses for that line through, through May are 5,200. So, very close to 6,000.
Yes.
I don't know exactly what we spent. I suspect it's exactly what.
Well, there are two sources of the vaccine. One of them is directly from the state that, that is assigned to the city for people that cannot pay. And then there is the other source that we buy and get reimbursed through separate payment and Medicaid Medicare. So that only, some of that money will come back because people that can pay, we use the, the health insurance. So I, I, I don't know that answer.
So do we have a question, Counselor?
Any other questions for Counselor Vido? Next, we'll move on to elder affairs.
Elder affairs, that's the next page, 42, salary page 28. There are four positions funded in this department. The operations line, elder programs is up slightly, 11,000, just over $11,000. The idea here is that the types of programs that are offered, the dance, dances over and such, would have to be expanded because we have to offer more of those programs with less people participating because of the pandemic. So there is some thought that there would be more classes, less participants within the classes, attendance restricted and such. And so that's the purpose behind that increase. The accreditation line is going down and that's because we don't need that expense. In fiscal '21, the accreditation was in fiscal '20, the 2,500. Not sure how long that is, whether we have to do it. How frequently do we need that?
Yeah, it has to be, it's a reaccreditation process. It could be. I, I think it's two years.
Okay, so we don't need it in '21. So that's, that's the elder affairs.
Tom, with last year, we did the pilot program for the bus shuttle. Is that still in here somewhere?
No, it's not in the budget. It's, it's in the budget line, contract services. We get a free cash supplement.
Yes, so we were, before COVID, we were planning to reopen this through a free cash request. And it actually is in a matchweta that I sent you just before COVID-19. But I think we're all in agreement that we cannot transport elders on a bus in fiscal year '21. Maybe in the spring, but we're not funding any transportation of elders. We just can't put people on a bus, though. That is out for now, I guess, to be revisited perhaps in the spring, if and when it's safe to transport elders. And as Ed was saying, the reason for the bump up in programming is exactly that. The expectation is when that senior senate opens, and we hope it will open soon, it's going to open with very limited attendance. And so some of the programs that she offers, whether it's bingo or it's zumba or it's exercise, are going to have to be held more often with limited participants. And so I think there'll be more instructor with time and requirements and hours. And so we beefed up this so that she can, if this continues the whole year, offer programming that happens more often with less participants. And that was the thinking. But in terms of transportation, we are assuming that's out at least probably for the first half of FY '21. And if we need it, we'll come back to with a free cash request at the start of the, of calendar 2021.
Any questions from Counselors Damali, Vido?
I, I don't really have a question. I just want to make a comment that I, I remain in awe of the amount of work that the seniors center is able to do with such a modest budget. And I think they do a great job over there. And I also want to highlight that through the pandemic, they've been serving over 700 elders weekly. And, you know, they, they, they don't usually talk about that stuff, but it's important to make sure that we highlight those that have been on the front lines doing a lot of this work. So I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge that.
Anyone else? Any other counselors? No? Okay.
Veterans Affairs, page 24. There's one person staffed here, the veterans agent in the salary section. The operations section, there's a few things to highlight here. The first is on veterans benefits. We are reducing this by $206,000. If you look at the actual numbers from '17 forward, the actual numbers have declined in this type of benefit. It started out at 40, 444,017, 406 in '18, 275 in '19. We're in the range of 250 to 270, expected for FY '20. And so this 320 that we are proposing to budget for '21 seems reasonable. That's about 50,000 higher than what we think we'll spend this year, but reasonable. So we think that this line can effectively afford this reduction. The second thing to point out is the veteran support services. This is a new line. We added this line last year with the intent to fund things that were previously funded in medical services that didn't belong there. So things like food vouchers or furniture, utilities, rent, funeral expenses. Those sorts of things should be separated out from medical expenses, where medical expenses would be dental, medical appointments, prescription drugs, those sorts of things. So this is a new line. We just took the funding from one of the other lines and transferred it in last year. And so this is what we're doing, is continuing this with 25,000. We think it'll come in less than that, but then for us in auditing, it was important to separate out what is not medical and shouldn't be reported as medical as a different type of service.
This, I, I can't remember the date, but I think that we had a meeting, a conference regarding some sort of, uh, revolving fund that would allow a veterans affair officer. And he's here at present, so I just wanted to state to everybody that Francisco Torres is here, for those of you who can't see him, that I think that they were for funding that were outside of the guidelines. And I'm trying to remember the conversation that we had.
Yes, so I.
So do you want to, is this, this?
No, so that, what you're remembering is the veterans service office had recommended that we adopt a local option, which would have created a voluntary fund, a check off on the tax bills, just like we do with the scholarship fund. And it would fund a separate account under his authority that would be purely his discretion to spend money on things like rent, utilities, et cetera, but would not have the limitations of the statutory financial constraints that he operates under when he wants to give veterans benefits. So there are people who just miss qualify him and he really can't help them with the money that we appropriate. This is a local option that allows you to create a fund with more flexibility. And he would then have the flexibility, if someone was just over the threshold, Francisco would tap into that fund to help. That's what that is. It's still pending, in committee, and hasn't yet been voted on by the council. If it is, it will allow us to have another check off system. And instead of having, we'll just add another sheet to the tax bill. There'll be one quarter. We can do that for every quarter, except there's one quarter we add a sheet in the bill for explanatory purposes. And that month will, will, will like flip. It will alternate between when the veterans want a scholarship one. But in most bills, we'll have both, assuming the council adopts that requirement. That's what we were remembering.
And how is this $25,000 different than, is that similar use?
This is, this is money that we're appropriating. It will only likely be for people who qualify under the statutory restrictions.
Yes, I, I believe that's true because it came out of medical services and both the medical services line.
So someone, so you have to qualify under these statutes as a, as to, there are financial qualifications for these benefits. That fund will have no such financial. So it's like, why we wanted to create our own rehab program at 100% AMI? Because the C D G program limits you to 80%. This would have, this would be a program that he could set up his own financial limitations. He might say, I'm, I'm going to take care of people at 100%.
I was on the assumption, or we meant that, we were going to give them, I think, at least 10,000 to be able to, like if somebody runs out of fuel assistance and, you know, who's a veteran and they exhausted their veteran services, that you would have a fund that they'd be able to supply maybe what, what a tank of fuel or something in between.
So this, so if you qualify for our support fund, this more would provide that amount of money. This 25,000 might be able to, you're saying you wanted a separate fund.
Well, before this, we talked about a separate fund.
Without any strings.
Right, that he would be able to utilize.
Not with any string, without string, but just without the same.
Without.
It'd still be statutory.
We, we might have, we might provide the strings.
Right, but not without the, well, the income.
Without any other strings.
Well, statutory. Well, statutory strings as well, yes. Or the accounting setup.
Right, so for veteran exhausted, their, their funds, they needed a voucher for food that he would be able to provide that. So what we're saying is the statute will cover that.
So I have to infer, I forgot about.
Think about something else.
No, I, I thought the conversation of putting something in the budget that would give him more flexibility. All right, okay, let me confirm with the Veterans Agent. Let me, uh, that, uh, assist.
Everybody.
The simplest thing, I, we create this fund, it might generate some money. That one thing the council would do is just adopt that open option before the end of June. It's still pending.
It's in council, we'll try to bring it back up. Okay.
No, it's still pending.
Any counselors at home? Ask any questions for our Veteran, Veteran Affairs Officer?
Yeah, when we're gonna get some sandwiches delivered, man, this is a long meeting today. I'm hungry, brother.
Come, come to our hallway, we got some stuff in the hallway.
I heard.
Okay, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rodder.
Okay, so we're on to Library, the Library Department, page forty five.
Library, page forty five.
There isn't much, um, to point out here. I'll just go over a couple of things. The longevity has dropped by fourteen hundred. There was a longtime employee who retired in this year, and so that, um, longevity for him has now been reduced, is now sixteen hundred, so there's a drop of fourteen. The operations lines are level funded. The second page on forty six shows a slight drop in the office equipment. So the office equipment line, this is a capital line that is used for DVD racks of furniture and things, so that's sought at the library. And so that's been dropped a little bit by, um, half the value, five thousand dollars. The computer equipment remains there at five. So overall, this budget is down slightly above forty-six hundred, or one point two three percent. And Sarah is here, I'm sorry, Sarah, Sarah Jackson, the.
Welcome, Sarah.
Hello, my name is.
Director.
Counselors, any question?
Any new computers in the library?
I just got one question.
Uh, well, there's a, there's a desk, so, so in, in I, IT's budget, one of the things that was in the capital was the desktop replacements, so that would be for the employees. This other five thousand that's here is for the public. I don't know how many there are, Sarah, how many public, uh, computer terminals are there? Okay. So, um, there, there is money there for that, and I, I don't think we're using, um, IT's money for that, that is coming out of here.
Counselor Brown?
Another question?
Yes, how many full-time positions do we have at the library?
I'm sorry.
How many full-time positions?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr..
Five.
So the budget is budgeting seven and a half positions, but five are full-time. The rest are part-time, hourly, um, desk attendance, and, uh, library aides.
Okay, um, on the longevity, um, I know we talked about that last time, do you have to be a full-time employee for that?
Uh, well, that's, that position is in libraries, so when he retired, we filled that position with a different person, so it's a full.
No, that's not my question, for longevity pay, for the bonus, um, do you have to be a full-time employee?
Yes, yes. You have to be, it's a contractual obligation, so the part-time staff members at the library are not union staff members. And so there is no benefit of this type for them. The four full-time, five, so four, four in the library union, one in the exempt group, has the longevity benefit available to them. And it is paid based on the length of time that someone is employed by the city.
Okay.
So this is one of the top ones.
No more questions?
Any other counselors? Nope?
Thank you.
Okay, that was, that was easy.
You weren't here. The council complimented the job that they did, uh, and the staff had done during this epidemic, and Howard was able to, um, give lectures and videos, uh, for the children at home, the parents, saying.
Very difficult job.
Very difficult job, great job.
Sarah. Okay, the last, the last division in HHS is the Recreation and Cultural Affairs. This is on page forty seven. Bee Cravada is here, Director of Cultural Affairs. So we're on page forty seven of the main budget document, page thirty-one of the salary document, page twenty-two, that carries over to twenty-three on the annotated document. The, um, part-time position in the salary category, I'd like to just highlight the part-time position increase from forty to eighty. Previously, before pandemic, we had fees that were charged for some of the courses that were taken at the community schools. We are reducing fees or not charging fees coming into fiscal twenty one. Those fees were used to pay for instructors, offer maintenance staff, the security staff, and we're no longer gonna be able to do that through the fees that we collect. And so this is the reason for the increase of forty thousand in the part-time line. The contract services in the operations section is up a hundred thousand dollars. This is a direct result of the Gaming Commission, the Gaming Commission contribution that we receive every year for a hundred thousand, that needs to be appropriated, and so that is now added into this budget as a result. There are a couple of small drops in other supplies and in celebrations. This budget also funds youth programs. You see second line from the bottom in the operations category, two hundred and twenty-six thousand in youth programs around the city. Overall, this budget is up a hundred and fifty thousand or twenty-seven percent. Other questions related to cultural affairs?
Yes. Um, on the youth activities, uh, activities, how many was, how many activities were planned and last year out of the funding?
How many youth activities?
Activities?
Funded last year?
Yeah, two thousand and twenty.
How many activities?
How many activities, how many classes?
No, 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 with the sports, under the sports, it's talked about, um, Mr. Dunn just talked about the sports, the youth sports activities.
Well, you, youth, youth activities, the youth programs is actually the, the, um, and I believe that's, that's, um, contracted out, so we pay, I don't know, it's the collaboratives.
There are different sport programs, there's sports, there's also the park, the people, there's the wide variety. So it's, uh, so I guess if I just, what the question is, is how many actual, is sport changed? Or is it youth activities in general?
No, 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 my question is, my question is, how many youth program did you actually do last year out of this funding? And what, and what were they?
So every, so last year, we did about, about a hundred, there was about a hundred and eighty programs through the entire year. We're holding, we're doing fifty-five and almost up to about eighty programs, seventy programs that we can have each program, and that includes adults. For children, probably, I am gonna, I can get back to you exactly, but I will say, um, maybe a hundred, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifteen programs through the whole year. And it's, and wide variety, from sports to also, but sports have taken work back, see, because the gym is so needed by sport leagues. So a lot of our sport activities have, have come back, uh, because, have been cut back from the budget.
And who conducts these, who, who runs these programs? I mean, do we have folks to run them, or are they just free for all, you're a member and you can just play in the gym all day?
Oh, no, we, we, we hire instructors and people that are, that have a background, either experience or certifications, or, uh, again, they have some kind of background. And they're, and they're very, they're quite qualified. In our, in our literature, we have their files in the back of, uh, booklet, and you can give the, attribute all of their backgrounds, from graduate, undergraduate degrees, into certifications in wide variety.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, though, this particular line item that we're seeing that is, is titled Youth Programs, the majority of this money is for youth programs that are run by other entities. So we give a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the collaborative for this summer youth employment initiative.
Okay, that's what I was, okay, yeah.
We give funding to CAPIT for their summer camp. We give funding to Green Roots for their Echo Youth Program. So the majority of this money is outsourced to help those nonprofits run independent youth programming in the city.
And that's what I was looking for, because it's an awful lot of money just to have program, youth programs, and you don't really see the youth program to hear about. But now, knowing that those monies goes to those programs, those other entities, um, the collaborative, the Green Roots, and the other, um, CAPIT, that's what I was trying to figure out where that money was going.
I would just add that one other piece of this is that twenty thousand dollars that the council has asked to be set aside for scholarships or youth scholarships, which are overseen by this department as well. And that's to assist people to both attend the various summer camps uh, that used to happen in the city, uh, only some of which may be happening this summer. And the, uh, we also give scholarships to some of the youth sports leagues, so that kids who otherwise can't afford their, even their modest fees, can join the program. And that's overseen by, uh.
Well, I have a question.
But, sorry, counsel, right?
So I was under the impression that under the new, um, um, Recreation Division too, that there were, there were new program, new youth programs the city was actually conducting, like, um, there, there was going to be a martial arts, um, thing until COVID hit, you know, it's, it's kind of, uh.
We've enhanced our own programming, but the majority of this number is.
Is, goes to the outsourced.
But in addition, we have substantially, we have the sort of.
So that's my, so that's my question. How, how much of this two twenty-six, uh, thousand is, you, you said a hundred and fifty thousand went to, a hundred and fifty thousand of that went to the nonprofits? And then the rest was, was for?
Hundred and fifty is collaborative.
Oh, sorry, it was just a collaborative.
Twenty-five for CAPIT.
So one seventy-five, so, so about fifty thousand for the rest?
Twenty Green Roots, this is like five, there's five, I'm sorry, there's, there's five, um, items listed on the annotated, so, um.
Sorry.
Hundred and fifty thousand on collaborative.
What, what was the, I'm sorry, I've got.
No, I, I know, I know.
So I think I know what you're asking.
Yeah.
How much are we spending? Correct, so what I, what Bee was saying is, most of our expense to run our own new programs is in this temporary salary lineup, because we are basically paying for the instructor.
Right.
To instruct. And so that's where all the money is. It's not in this line item of two hundred and twenty-six.
Okay.
It's in this part-time salary lineup.
Okay.
Some of which occasionally was covered by fees. But since we're either not charging now or reducing them, we're putting more in that so that we can maintain the programming, maintain the payment of instructors, and continue even at reduced.
So that's the answer to my question, thank you.
Any other counselors with questions? Demoli?
Uh, just a comment, I just wanna just thank Bee for, uh, what Natalie and Omar have been able to do. I, I've seen this program grow from its inception, and I just, I'm really, I'm really in awe of what we've been able to do. I've seen a lot of these events at Highland Park, at Williams School, as you know, I run my own basketball league. So, and it's, and I've been able to work with you in a different capacity without my council hat, and I just wanted to thank you guys for the work that you did.
Thank you.
And continue to do.
Yeah, it's a great group, we're working hard.
The, uh, the availability of the gym, now that the Clark School, you have the Williams School, I know you don't really have a lot of access to the high school. They rent a lot of those facilities for?
All, all three of them, thank you, dude. They were still, all three of them are being used from, I would say, October, until early November, it's getting colder, and it goes right through, through, until probably, I would say, mid-April, mid-April. And all three gyms are using the plan. And it's reduced a lot, but still there's a lot of, because we, we can get, we can excel, come over, eat, we can have a little over. So, um, all three, it's a perfect company to, uh.
And, and you charge your nose outside groups to rent with them?
Then, yes, everybody has a very minimal, it's like they can do seventy dollars and fifty cents for, if you're sort of active, fifteen dollars for a full gym.
And what's the availability of the full gym?
Like the availability of the full gym, uh, there's a lot of availability between four and probably six o'clock. Our problem is the gridlock, uh, the, the kids might get back and parents with their homework and things from the house by nine at the latest. So a lot of people, what it uses during, between six and eight three, and that's the gridlock. That's why we needed to have people work on that, so, to help the basketball teams to, to be able to have seventeen as the practices.
Yeah, well, I know, because we only, when we were doing the youth basketball, we only had one gym.
I know. The, uh, youth is heavily teaching, it's very busy.
Yeah. I know, that was my question, because I've got questions about people being able to rent the gym. You know, on your own, as, as, as any, uh, league in Chelsea. Any other questions for, uh, Bee? Same, uh?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Luis, thank you, Bee.
Thank you, Bee.
Thank you, Lee, thank you, Bee.
Planning and Development, so Planning and Development is next, uh, the page number is twenty in the master document, main budget document, page twenty. The annotated version is page eight. And the salary is page thirteen, so I'll repeat those, the main budget box proposal is page twenty. The annotated version of the budget is page eight, and the salary page thirteen. We have John DePree, the Director of Planning and Development, here with us. We have Alex Train, the Assistant Director of Planning and Development, here with us. So they are distributing some handouts. So there's.
Can you get that to our, to our?
Yes.
So this department has eight positions. There are, um, a combination of, of, uh, oh, sorry.
Take two minutes of that.
Thank you, Leo, for that.
The people at home.
Oh, certainly, certainly, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, so, soon as the ball of pop comes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any answers there? Thank you. Well, I.
While we wait, I just wanna commend Alex and Ben for the amazing work that you. that you guys have done, um, during the pandemic, the way that you guys have showed up. Honestly, I am so grateful. You know, I always make it a big thing about people in Chelsea, residents, getting the jobs in Chelsea because I feel like residents, people from outside of the city just don't care about the jobs as much as residents. But it's become very clear to me about where you all stand. So I just wanted to make sure, so acknowledge you guys for the food distribution, uh, program that you guys handled throughout the pandemic. Thank you.
Good, it's our pleasure, thank you.
And Mimi, I'm sorry, and Mimi. I forgot she's in that department as well.
It's on to the head, you can put it up on the screen if you want. Well, we can't get it on the screen, actually, not too well, who are at home, unfortunately.
Is there a way that we can maybe get a digital copy after the fact?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
New, um, Fatima Ward guilty?
Actually, I can email it. I can email it right now.
All right, give that off.
You got it, Fatima? Okay. Yeah.
Alex is stepping up by email.
Thank you, Leo.
So, uh, I'm told the fire department will not be here tonight?
That's, that's what I heard tomorrow.
Okay, and we're going to do auditing instead?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who wouldn't be here tonight, Roy?
So councilors, uh, the fire department will not be on tonight. It will be auditing instead. Fire department is being shifted to Thursday evening.
I stayed up here all night, but I want... I gotta go cook now, man.
Thank you, Fatima.
And what was your reason for not being here tonight, councilor?
He had something come, I didn't speak to him. Ned mentioned to me that something came up for him at the last, uh, fire chief.
Okay.
He, he, he didn't let us know this day ago, I didn't come this evening. I just, you know, to keep that on. So we were aware and we checked it.
Thanks, Ned.
So it's Ned's fault, good, duly noted.
They got it, so we're all set.
Oh, okay. So, um, we're going to do planning development now?
Um, yes, page, page twenty of the master document, page thirteen of the salary, and page nine of the annotated. The, uh, salaries in this department, there are eight positions funded in this department, which is a combination of general fund and grant funds. The, um, most significant operational change is the contract services line that is increasing by a hundred and ninety thousand. There are a couple of reasons for this. The gaming commission funds is part of that. Seventy-five thousand for business development and a hundred thousand for workforce development. There's also some funding that's coming over from, if you remember last year's conversation on this department, we had said that there are some funding sources that are off the general fund that we would like to eliminate. We had an audit concern that we needed to start to wean off of that. And so this is an initiative to do part of that, is to bring in what we used to pay from another source onto the general fund. So some of this funding is for that as well. The overall department is up thirty-eight percent as a result of that, or a hundred and eighty-five thousand. The, um, department had also passed out a, a handout. So if you want to go through that for the council, we could do that.
Before they start, and I just put a final point on what Ed was saying. So if you recall our discussion, which we had both the last two budgets cited, uh, this department historically, long before any of us was here, uh, bought up, took a lot of its funding from this redevelopment fund, which was money that the city had received, uh, I don't even know how, from the sale of...
Sale of properties.
Urban redevelopment properties and funded the department moat from this fund for a long period of time. Several years ago, the auditors told us we have to stop. But that was, you know, to do it in one year was very difficult. So we agreed with the auditors that we would, over a three-year period, wean ourselves off of this redevelopment fund. So for each year, less and less has come up, less and less personnel and less and less, uh, operations have come out of this redevelopment fund. For this year, which I think will be the last year we make any use of this redevelopment fund, we've limited this fund exclusively to the three salaries that you see here. All of Mimi's salary and just a portion of Ned's salary and a portion of Sayu's salary. Everything else is out of this fund, including the sort of, uh, miscellaneous contracts we, the funding used to go. So when the council said, oh, can we study Park Square? We said, yeah, all right, we'll do a study. You know, things come up during the course of the year, council wants to do something, it requires hiring a traffic engineer or something. We typically dipped into this source because it was money that hadn't otherwise been appropriate as a place we could get money. What we've done this year is moved every, so to the extent we have these miscellaneous contracts that we sometimes funded from this, we've now moved that into this contract line item. So one piece of why that's up by a hundred and ninety is because we've added a little bit of money there to take care of these miscellaneous unforeseen things that come up during the course of the year. We need to hire someone to do something that wants to advance a project and the city of the council will go to this contract services. But as Ed said, the major reason that contract line item is up is the two appropriations that he did last year, independent of the budget, and now are in the budget, which is the two pieces that are funded from that gaming revenues that are built into our budget, which is a hundred thousand dollars, which you, which is required to set aside for workforce development. And that'll, we'll do RFPs from this account. And the seventy-five thousand for business development, also required by the gaming commission. Again, we'll do an RFP from this account. So that accounts for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The balance is putting some money aside that used to come out of the redevelopment fund to handle unforeseen miscellaneous expenses that may come up during the course of the year that might require, whether it's a landscape architect, a, a traffic consultant, or something of that nature.
Okay. Do you want to go through your presentation?
Yes. Um, okay, so we passed out, uh, three sheets, beginning with the, uh, salary sources for FY twenty-one hot table. This is just a summary of where our staff salaries are funded from. Um, as you can see, it's a breakdown between that redevelopment line that the city manager had indicated, which has been shrinking in recent years, uh, community development block grant funding, and then traditional city general fund, uh, salary funding. On the, uh, second page, there is a summary of our s- salary funds coupled with our social service, housing, infrastructure and planning project, uh, revenue. Uh, this is funding that we have derived over, that we will derive or are deriving um, for various projects. Uh, the specific projects are broken down on the last two pages. Um, in total, we anticipate bringing in approximately twenty-seven point six million dollars in rent funding, uh, throughout the course of FY twenty-one. That's a mix of projects that will be breaking ground as well as grant funding that we're in the process of securing and will have contracts in place for come FY twenty-one. Um, I won't dive into all of these, but we're happy to answer any questions during this meeting or after this meeting if you have any, any particular, um, questions. But, um, notably, the, this budget does include a recent commitment from Mass Department of Transportation, uh, for six point six million dollars for the downtown Broadway corridor down in FY twenty-five. This is a project that we have under design right now that we've been coordinating with city council on. Uh, Mass DOT has budgeted this in their statewide transportation budget, um, as of about a week ago. Um, otherwise, there is a series of housing-related grants, environmental grants, transportation, parks and open space, as well as a continuation of our community development block grant-funded activities. I think lastly, um, there is new funding in here from the CARES Act. We do anticipate receiving four hundred thousand dollars from the community development block grant program that will be primarily for public social services and small business assistance. We expect that that funding should arrive in late July or early August. Um, that's pretty much it, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Councilor Beadle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, hold on, I, I'm, I'm sorry, my eyes are like tapped out from looking at the computer so long. Um, under housing projects on the document that you passed out, do you see where it says targeted code, first-time home buyers?
Yep.
Right under that, foreclosure is spelt wrong. I'm just kidding. It is spelt wrong, but that wasn't my question. My question, my question is, I'm just curious about, I know that there was a while where we couldn't fill the position for housing. I'm just curious as to where we are with that.
Well, that was actually filled, uh, in March, just before, you know, the left for...
Is that Sayu's position?
I'm sorry?
Is that Sayu's position?
That's Sayu's position, yes.
Okay. I, I was under the impression there would be two positions in housing. Am I, am I wrong?
We had also, uh, advertised for a, um, a, a person to help us, uh, take with the CPA and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Yes.
But, uh, we're not going forward with that.
We're not going forward. Okay. That's all.
Anyone else? Leo?
But actually, wait, wait, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Did I, am I interrupting someone?
I, I think Councilor Robinson will yield the floor. Go ahead, Councilor Beadle.
I'm sorry, it's, there's like a delay over here. Um, just, I thought that the CPA housing person, like, doesn't the money come out of the CPA in order to fund that position? Why did we opt to not go that route?
A portion of the funds comes from the CPA, but there are also the benefits and, uh, others that will come from the city force.
Yeah, the city is responsible for covering the benefits with that position. It's about twenty-five thousand a year.
Okay. Um, o- okay. I'll definitely be quiet now.
Councilor Robinson?
Well, my, 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 my question goes to something that I've been pushing Tom and I on in regards to contracts. Is having a timeline and an ending line with penalties and whatnot, even though that, we didn't have that in there. I know we dealt with a contract that always seems to come in at the lowest bidder. I, and tracking him personally, myself, and watching his operation, um, seems like he comes to Chelsea, starts a job, you know, he's here for months, then he'll come back, and then we're going to do a workout or possibly form or work at something that came up that was unforeseen and worked in a bid. So how do we stand now with, when we just give a contract to you?
So I'll comment on that and also that, that particular contractor. So that particular contractor, um, based on city council's guidance that we heard during that last subcommittee hearing and throughout our conversations, um, we've, we've definitely taken that to heart. So that contractor was a low bidder on a recent project. Uh, it was the DPW's Upper Broadway Utility Project. We did reject the bid, deeming them irresponsible. We ended up going before the Attorney General's office on a bid protest and we actually won and came out with the second lowest bidder who we deemed responsible. Um, so I do think you'll see a more sort of aggressive posture in this realm taken by our department, taken by DPW, where, you know, accountability and standards will be increasing. And that's sort of the first of what, you know, we hope that will be, you know, additional oversight on projects.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we, uh, sit and set the tone, not the adult, set the tone to our citizens to, uh, what their timeline is as opposed to what I...
Absolutely.
That was my question.
Can I just circle back to one thing that, that Councilor Beadle raised? So I, this issue of whether we should go forward with this hiring of a person for CPA and Affordable Housing Trust Fund, even though it has this issue of benefits that we haven't yet figured out, I am not convinced that we're not going forward with that. I think we're going to figure this out because that is an important position for the city and, uh, we'll figure this out. So I haven't got it figured out tonight, but I will tell you, it is my intent to fill that position in fiscal year twenty-one. It will not be anything you need to appropriate. We will figure out how to handle this, uh, because as you did say, the majority of this funding is coming half from CPA and half from Affordable Housing Trust Fund, both of which have approved the funding for.
Yeah.
Yes, there's this hurdle of benefits, which is not an insignificant piece, but we will solve it. And so I feel confident that with some further discussion, we'll solve this problem probably in the course of the next month or two.
Thank you. I was, I was concerned because, you know, you can imagine after pandemic and after this moratorium is, uh, lifted, I'm just, I'm just concerned about what's going to happen here locally.
Whether we will find someone is a whole different story. It took us two years to find the housing person.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask something, building on what Councilor Robinson said as far as developers kind of having power. Um, with these mixed income, uh, buildings that are happening, I know that I've sat in many planning and zoning board meetings where we say that, you know, the affordable housing units have to be built exactly as the market rate unit. But how are we managing that? Because I've heard of instances where that hasn't been the case and the city hasn't been able to kind of get a grasp on that.
We do it through inspections. Um, before we sign off on any occupancy permits, uh, we have to inspect the sites and, uh, follow that inspections guaranteeing that, or, or observing that the affordable units are of the same quality as the market rate.
So in a situation that, that's not the case, are you saying that that's, that's a mistake on the ISD side?
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's ISD. I said, I personally go out and inspect these units. Which, which sites are you saying that were not, um?
Um, I had heard a situation on Parker Street. That development that happened there?
The, uh, the fifty-two Parker.
Yeah. Where there was an affordable housing unit was the floor wasn't the same as the other, as the market rate unit. And that when they came to the city, that it hadn't been, that, that there was no, no course of action, they had to actually fight on their own. Not ringing a bell?
Well, I, I, I did inspect that unit and it was with the same type of quality and finishes and, um, uh, furnishings and stuff like that. So it did meet that criteria. I'm not, I was not aware that, it was a concern that it did not meet the, uh, it was not the same quality as the market rate.
Um, Alex, are you aware of that, say, at all or no?
So I was going to add, in, after that initial inspection takes place, we conduct annual monitoring. So we hire a consultant that we share regionally with Revere, Everett, a couple of other surrounding municipalities to ensure that the units are then maintained and kept up according to the same standards that market rate units have to. Um, I do recall that Spencer Ave, uh, property, that was a pretty difficult situation with, uh, the owner. that was a pretty difficult situation with the property owner. So the property owner did meet all of the basic legal requirements. Finishes were of the same quality. The amenities were similar, but there were issues like the HVAC system wasn't operational when they moved in that we had to talk with the owner about doing before the person moved in. So there were little things like that that are huge for a homeowner, but from a developer's perspective, you know, they're within this gray area of the law. So we were able to sort some of that out with them. On other items, you know, there's only so much latitude we have legally in those situations. If everything's passing the basic sort of smell test and they meet those basic requirements, that's what we have to follow.
The state thing?
Could you repeat that to Molly? You were muted.
Who, oh, oh, sorry. Who sets the, the state test, the, the, the standard? You said there's gray area. I'm just curious as to who's setting the rules here.
For the units that are created, if going to our, our zoning, that's in the zoning, the affordable housing zoning has the criteria in there. The unit you're talking about 52 was not part of that. That was actually a voluntary on his part that he submitted. That was built before the, how the zoning was adopted.
So I guess my question is, is there something that the city council could do to be, be a little bit more tighter with that rule? To make sure that developers are not getting away with that, whether they're volunteering or not? If they're, they're saying they're going to do it, they should do it in good faith.
I think your ordinance is, that's why I was a little puzzled about this address because I didn't remember it falling within your affordable housing ordinance. I think your ordinance is pretty stringent in terms of requiring this high level and can be enforced by us. I didn't know anything. So this was a voluntary agreement. So wasn't, certainly not subject to as tough as a language as you have in your ordinance. I think what you have put, what you have created in that affordable housing zoning ordinance is a very good ordinance that should allow us to adequately enforce these rules.
So even if they voluntarily provide an affordable housing unit, can we mandate that they, that they keep up with the same standard as if the, the, yeah?
Yes. When I, if, if it goes through the zoning, when I write the conditions, I'll write that they voluntarily, they volunteer this unit and that they have to meet the conditions of being not differentiated from the market. So I put in the condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other councils have any questions regarding development?
Well, being as you say, can you give us an update on the rental system?
Sure. So we received a little over 1,560 applications. There was 1,566 total. We're able to award funds to about 20% of them. So right now, we're in the process of circulating grant agreements to the selected applicants and their property owners, working with Chelsea Restoration and disperse funds over the next two weeks. For the ones that were not selected, we're referring them to other housing resources, to rental assistance, other housing counseling, the voucher programs at Chelsea Housing Authority at the state level. But we're doing a lot of legwork with individual property owners, particularly those that own larger multifamily properties that had a lot of tenant supply, that didn't receive money to discuss both payment plans and rent forgiveness for those tenants. You know, the eviction moratorium ends on August 18th and we're honestly horrified over the prospect of waves of evictions starting on August 18th. So we're devoting all of our housing staff resources right now or consulting resources to this program and to this issue between now and that date in August.
Yes, my idea was to start a pool program, do a 10-month, like this is, because I'll probably be a little better use at this point.
I can't, I can't hear Mr. Robinson.
So Counsel Robinson mentioned that it, in light of the dire need that there were an abundant, many more applicants that were not chosen, the question he raised is whether or not it made more sense to provide rental assistance in lieu of the food assistance program. Counselor Taylor?
I just, I actually got your email today regarding the how we would possibly transition out of the food program into the quote, you know, EBT card program and how we could, you know, it's only gonna be able to, we're only gonna be able to afford to do it for two months if that's, if that's what the gist of the email was. I noticed that, I, I haven't, I, I must confess, I haven't done my diligent follow-up with you over this. But, um, you know, we initially talked about, because I think what you're trying to do is, is like the debit card type thing, right? So that's gonna be basically without restriction, right? It's, it's a cash.
It will be without restriction.
Yeah. And, and is it, and, and we're gonna have to pay fees to the, to the institution to have it, to, to actually have this done?
It's, I mean, I'm working with this Shaw Foundation with a, so let me just start it. The Shaw Foundation has someone, but it's a national entity. They watch the work. I'm searching for local banks to see if someone local would do. Uh, I have a call with East Kings Sims tomorrow. I've already talked to Metro. They can't do it for a variety of reasons. Frankly, most of these local banks outsource all this cost. So my expectation is, is not gonna be any local bank that can handle the infrastructure of this program. So we may be stuck with a national entity because unless you are a Chase or a Bank of America, you are a even eastern that I thought would be the prime bank, given how much a charity work and how Chelsea's revenue, they outsource all of this to the third party.
And how will we determine who gets the funds?
We're gonna have to do an application program and some sort of certification.
Just gonna be legal standards?
It will be the same way we handled the rental assistance program. We did the same thing, application and self-certification.
I'm sorry, what was the last part of Mr. Taylor's question?
Application and self-certification.
No, the question. I heard your answer. I didn't hear the question.
The question, well, it was, the question was, how will we hand, how will we select people for this debit card program? And I don't know of any other way other than the same way we did it as a rental assistance. We solicited application.
And, and, and it will be, this portion will be available for reimbursement direct under the, under the COVID?
It should be. We got reimbursed for.
No, I, hey, listen, that was, that was fantastic. And so fast, too.
Right. So just so you know the logistics of it, my, my goal is to just reuse the same money again and get reimbursed for it again. That was, we got reimbursed for it. We now have money.
All right. So if that's, if that's the case?
I have no reason to think we, it won't be eligible for reimbursement. Right at the moment, however, we have a reimbursement cap of 3.5 million.
Right.
But we haven't, we've only received 2.5. But we have been told that A, more money is coming. And B, for high-hit COVID-19 communities, A and F will consider giving you more money than your cap. And I have no doubt they'll consider that for you.
All right. Thank you.
But they have said, don't come to us until you receive your cap.
Counsel Lopez?
Thank you. On the rental assistance, you guys mentioned something about this organization that is on the street. How much are we paying them for, for calling the, the people who got a, who got the, like you said, or the rental assistant? Are we paying them any money? Because I know that's free.
We are, yeah. We're paying them, I think it's $32,500 to supplement our program delivery. So they helped us during the application phase with distributing the applications. They helped us review all 1,500 applications, score them, do the lottery, and then they're assisting us with the grant agreements right now as well as the dispersment of funding. So there is four staff there that have been working on the program with our housing project manager and myself.
All right, thank you.
And the funding for it was, was allocated from the Community Preservation Committee. They gave up to 5% of the total amount of funding as administrative funding, which was a little over $62,000. So we've used approximately a little over half of that on this contract and then approximately $3,000 of additional funding on printing.
All right. So, so their job is calling the homeowners and also the tenants? So they, they, that they did a qualified rental assistance?
Right. So their job was to help us receive the applications, review the applications, score the applications. And then they're following up with the selected applicants and they're contacting applicants that weren't selected. And then they're also working with the tenants and the landlords to sign grant agreements for the funds. So before we can actually release any funding, we have to have a signed agreement between all parties that have the terms of the program. So they're helping with all of those phases.
Okay. And also, how many families were with rent, this rental assistant?
We've served approximately 302 so far. We're talking with other landlords right now about absorbing some of the costs so we can free up money to help more households.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Can I just add something? In response to Counsel Taylor's question, I don't want to give the impression that the only thing I want to do with that COVID reimbursement money is for food. I think we could, we should be looking perhaps at a second round of rental assistance for that money and maybe split the amount between rental assistance and food. Because I feel like we can get a grant for the food. I feel like there could be some philanthropic dollars for the food. So I don't know that initially we will have to commit more than $1 million to at least buy us a two full months of a pretty robust program and maybe even have enough money to carry us into the fall a little bit. And I don't think we will need to use all of that money. I think we could think about a second round of rental assistance as well. But I don't want to present anything to the council until I've spent a little more time sorting out this food thing, which has been very complicated. So I don't have any plan for you. I just don't, didn't want you to think that the only thing I'm thinking about is using this money for more food. I think it can be used for a second round of rental assistance and maybe even a piece for another piece of small business. So we've had these three prongs and we might want to make sure that when we get reimbursed, we're using money in each of the prongs as well.
So like in a rental assistance program like the Housing Authority, couldn't, couldn't apply.
Speak loudly, Leo.
Yeah. The Housing Authority couldn't apply and they would develop, should have been able to apply because they're able to adjust their rent. So on the food side now, we're gonna be asking people, what do they receive in food stamps?
Yes, and may, and so.
There can be a balance of.
Yes. So let's, I'm just gonna say this for an example. Let's say that someone is applying who's eligible for SNAP. We want to get them into SNAP and then maybe we give them some small supplement versus the person who cannot qualify for anything. We may be giving them a larger, so if we said, we're gonna give someone up to $400, but if you're already eligible for SNAP, let's get you, let's get you applied for SNAP and maybe we're gonna give you only $150. Or if you got a PEBT card because you've had a child in the school system, maybe we don't have to give you as much as someone who doesn't have, got nothing because they don't have a child in the public school system in Chelsea. So yes, I think we can adjust this, but it's gonna be a little complicated because getting, proving some of this stuff is not gonna be the easiest. But our application will ask people, are they getting SNAP? Are they getting a PEBT card? Are they getting WIC? So we will try to sort some of this out.
Tom, playing the devil's advocate. I applied for food assistance. You have the application and it says, am I currently receiving SNAP benefits? I check no, even though I am. Who is the entity that is verifying this application that has the access to the database of SNAP?
Yeah, I don't know. We are trying to sort that out. Trying to figure that.
Because in order for you to verify and give that level, it has to be someone in the federal program who has access to that database. So unless we are working with a state agency, then we basically are taking them on the honest approach.
That's, that, that's my point. Is that, is that, is that at some point, we have to be able to verify or else it just becomes a cash giveaway. And, and, and I'm not saying that there's, li, listen, listen. I'm not saying that there isn't a need.
Right.
Okay? But I look at this as my responsibility, right, for the people who elected me, the taxpayers of Chelsea, to be responsible in doing this. And I know that is, is the opinion of a great many people to just open the floodgates and let all this money go with, without any types of strings of, hey, just get it out there, the faster the better. We don't, you know, this is an emergency. Get it out there, get it out there. And we, I mean, it is our, the people at this table and the people here on, on the television screens responsibility to, to do this in a, in a fiscally responsible way and to have some sort of, of, you know, guarantee.
Better balance.
That, that people, of course, people are gonna say, they're gonna say whatever it is. Are we gonna have under penalty of perjury? Like, that would even matter. All I'm saying is that we gotta, we gotta be careful about this. And if we're not, um, I think the taxpayers of Chelsea are going to, to start asking questions of its leadership about, you know, hey, listen, like, we've done all of this stuff. More than any other city in the Commonwealth has done, okay? We have gone over and above. And I've been with you guys all the way. You know, I've, 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 I've given out food, I've made deliveries, everything. I have been totally on board with this and you guys have done a great job. I've told you time and time again. That's not the issue. The issue is to, to act responsibly while we're doing this and to come up with something. And if we can't, if we can't come up with those guarantees, then we gotta figure out something else and not just go forward with a cash giveaway. So that's my, that's my concern.
So I, I, I hear you out and I understand the need to be the vanguard of finances. My problem is that, as I just asked and received, is that we will get so tied up in trying to come up. is that we will get so tied up in trying to come up with the verification that is impossible. I just, I just popped everyone's bubble, I mean, I'm sure they knew about it, and said, how are you gonna verify this when you don't have access to SNAP? And maybe this is too complicated of a process that we're asking the city manager to do. I think from the very beginning, my original thought was, and I know it's unpopular, but my decision is not because I don't wanna be, you know, um, diligent with the use of debt taxpayers' dollars, but that I find that the attempt to find all the answers and, and be sure is going to delay this into a way that's impossible. And say, maybe, like the one fund that we just trust, our, already, you know, our allies that are out there, our nonprofits that we have relationships with and say, look, you know our neighborhood best, you know our people best. Rather than get into this complicated EBT system, why don't we just designate our local partners and say, here you go, do the best you can. Because at the end of the day, we will never be able to verify without having access to that database whether or not that person already received SNAP or doesn't. Already has an EBT card and if I'm not mistaken, it bring up in the same email. I think you said you won't be able to roll this out if, with even, even a semblance of a decent program till September one?
August one is my.
August one.
Uh, yeah, we, we got it in the system.
So, so do we wanna wait, you know, that long?
Look, it's a con, it's a conundrum, okay?
So versus.
But.
Versus, and I wasn't, and versus saying, you know what? We're paying too much money having a DPW and everyone else run this program when we, wh- whatever leakage they may be, we'll get, we'll save and manpower.
Listen, I s- I was the one who was saying, you know, we gotta get rid of these, you know, non-food costs, uh, these logistical costs that we're paying for. But then other people objected and said, no, it's too far for people to walk. And then we've gotta pay an extra seventy-five thousand dollars a week to pay for that. And that's not even going into food. That's just going into moving the food. So, so I guess my, what my, what my thing is here is that maybe there's an additional way to think about solving this problem. And I think Roy's on to something, although I don't agree with what he was saying about, you know, just, just give the money to them and let them give away the, the, the gift cards. I mean, that's probably better than what we're doing now. And I think the city needs to get out of food, the actual food distribution business and, and go to something simpler and more efficient. So Roy has a point there. Um, I'm wondering if this is just something that the nonprofits, and I don't know what the state is doing. I know that the state has now, you know, had thirty-six million dollars now for, for additional funding for food insecurity, which is really what we're talking about. We have, you know, between ten and twenty thousand extra people in this city who are not counted and who we're not getting money for, we're not get, and this is the money that we're paying. These, this is who we're paying to take care of.
Can we get back to the budget?
No, no, no. This is, this, this is precisely about the budget. And, and so, and so I'm not objecting to that, okay? Like I said, I am not objecting to that at all. I'm objecting to the fact that this is a hard problem and it, and it's, and it, and we need to figure out a way to, to make sure that everybody's fed in this community, right? But that we're not simply giving cash away to people, okay? I don't think that's good public policy. And, and so I don't know if we can use our network of, um,
Nonprofit.
Nonprofits, pardon me, I'm having a senior moment here. Uh, using our nonprofits to do some of this work that they themselves are designed to do. Maybe it's too big of a thing for them to do all by themselves. I don't know. What has been done to kind of converse with, I know that they were part of this conversation originally. So, I mean, can, can, is this something that they can take care of and that we can maybe fund them in order to take care of this instead of, instead of us, you know? I, I just, I would feel a little bit.
So let me just say three things. First, we are putting on an RFP for administrative support in the hope that we can get one of these nonprofits to assist us in bedding applications. Second thing I would say is, at the end of the day, I think the president's right. We are gonna be at some point, and, and for some portion of these people relying upon self-certification. But we did it in the rental assistance program. That program worked exactly the same way. At the end of the day, we just trusted that these people owe rent.
I know.
And so that's two. The third thing I'm gonna say is, I know.
That, that program is just as much for the landlords as it is for the renters. And so that, that's an important component that we're leaving out there. I mean, this is, this is something that, you know, everybody worries about the renters and I do too, of course. But a lot of these landlords are not gonna be getting paid and you're worried about evictions and so am I. But what about the people that are gonna go bankrupt or have their, you know, this is part of their livelihood and they're not getting paid? So, I mean, there's always two sides to a coin. That's all I'm saying.
I have a third point, which is this. At some point, we're getting hung up with the fact that instead of handing people a box of food, we're gonna hand them a lot of cash. That box of food we're handing is being handed out with no questions asked to anyone who shows up.
Oh, I know.
Some of whom don't even live in the city of Chelsea.
Correct.
No one see, you know, we've lived with this issue. They, you know, I think it's a, a very small maj- minority, but I'm sure there is that small minority in that line that aren't deserving. So we're gonna have the same problem when we hand people cap. I just don't s- I think we're still gonna meet the overwhelming needs of people who are in desperate need. And the people who are gonna rob us are a small minority. And I think at some point, we have to just accept that inefficiency to make the program work. Just as we have accepted it for the last two months to make the food distribute.
So here's another, here's just another, another point. I, I get what you're saying and I, and maybe you're right. Maybe we do have to.
Sure, we're gonna go, keep on going.
Uh, but, so, so, alright, fine. You wanna, you wanna move?
Well, I just, yeah, I appreciate, we, we did a sidetrack and I entertained it, but we have a long night here and I wanna get on to the next department.
Thank you, Mr. President.
One question to Tom, cause.
One question to Tom, go ahead.
What Tom and I have spoken on is that there's, there's a group of people in Chelsea who see very little money in the way of food in regards to any benefits from the government. I mean, then there are gonna be people who are gonna come in who have EBT cards that get four hundred, four hundred dollars. So we need to have a mechanism of how are people on the low and how are they gonna be treated to be able to get boosted up to the same amount of money that I might be getting, four hundred dollars.
Give me time to comment, you would have proposed. I just, this, I need a little time to explore.
Do, do I, or do I answer those in question of the nonprofits?
What was the question again?
We explored it with most of them.
Is it, is it too much for them?
It's too much to do.
Even, even in the planning?
That's the, that's the feedback we have.
Okay. Um, just to let everyone know, we got twenty minutes to finish. We have a four-hour limit on WebEx. So we're on a clock. We need to do auditing in the next twenty minutes. I'd like to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you.
I hope so.
Accounts payable processing, general ledger management and maintenance, budgeting, auditing and anything financial. We have, in our operations and maintenance line, some small variations. We have a thousand dollar increase in the equipment maintenance as a result of a new lease on a piece of equipment that is coming into a five-year lease and ending a five-year lease is an increase to that. Conference of travel, we are not going to one of our conferences this coming year and therefore there is a drop in that, uh, cost. The seventy-dollar drop in the dues and subscriptions. There was a membership for a K-roll association that was a one-time fee last year. We don't have to repeat that fee again this year, uh, but we are still members of that association. The overall increase is twenty-five thousand, just over twenty-five thousand, five point four six percent. Okay, can I answer any questions?
Uh, no, this is a call on, uh, we'll go next. And are we doing the, we did the intergovernmental, uh, already?
Inter-fund transfers, um, so we're all done with auditing. So the inter-fund transfers and that's near the end of the package, that's page fifty-six. Inter-fund transfers, we only have two left that I was responsible for, the inter-fund transfers and the salary reserve. So on page fifty-six, the inter-fund transfers, there are two items here. I'll call your attention to, to both, so that have changes so that you can see what is up with that. The first of those is a drop of five hundred thousand. This is an expense that we pay for the upkeep of marginal street property that is occupied by a rental car company. We have a written agreement that tells that we need to pay a million two eighty-five every year. The reason that's at seven eighty-five is we had some surplus in the line that we thought we could use for this year. We, we had some difficulties with, with expenses. And so we're using the surplus that is in this line to help supplement that. We still have to pay the million two eighty-five, but seven eighty-five, which is budgeted, five hundred is from the surplus in the line.
So these are, so just, I, these are reimbursable expenses that Enterprise hands to us every year. The lease agreement allows them to get the members return. We have a guarantee of large amounts of excise taxes. So sometimes they don't hand us one point two eight five million reimbursable expenses. Then it goes over carefully within every year. Sometimes it's a billion dollars. We have money left over and over the years, we have accumulated in this account a surplus of money. And we're using a piece of that surplus to supplement this year's appropriation. So we're not gonna overpay the full amount. And the people that draw down the surplus can use it and, uh, help us carry through this one year where we have a problem. And the same is true on the next one now, those people. This is the transfer to our O M Trust Fund. We make a small contribution every year to satisfy the rating agencies. The, this, uh, this, uh, obligation is about two hundred million dollars that we owe in our post-disemployment benefits. And we throw token amounts into this one company every year of three hundred thousand to satisfy the rating. And I'm not doing this issue because it's, you know, this is a crazy thing to do anyways, given the amount of debt. Uh, but, uh, and I, just so we, eventually we will stop making major contributions to this debt as soon as we pay off the欠款 by the way of the pension fund, which is on a schedule to be done in twenty twenty-eight. So we're getting close to paying that off and then that.
That was the eighty-two million?
That's eighty-two million.
Yeah, right, so.
And so at some point, if we stay on the current schedule, we'll have that paid off by twenty twenty-eight. And that'll free up like fourteen million dollars a year and we'll move it to this line.
Oh, I thought we were gonna give everyone a package. Come on, Tom, join me.
Alright, I respect.
Tax break for all homeowners.
There you go. And the last item is the salary reserve. We always try to put at least twenty-five thousand in this pot. This is for, uh, changes that happen during the course of the year. Someone comes in for reclassification and then their salary gets adjusted upward. Someone gets a promotion. There's always some of these deep things that happen. And so we're trying to have a little harnessness.
Last year it was funded at three hundred thousand because of the, these collective bargaining agreements that haven't settled. So when you did your votes earlier this year.
Money for that, but we're not gonna settle any collective bargaining agreements.
Right.
That's why I wanted one.
Right.
So there's no need for that, but we still need a small amount in this pot to handle odd ball salaries.
Fair enough.
I think we did it in.
Alright, everyone.
Ten minutes.
Can I just say something? I don't have a question about this specific department, but I just wanna tell the city manager that I'm extremely concerned about planning development, trying to cut out that housing position that, that for, I just wanna make sure that there is a priority to restore that position.
Yeah, so that, that wasn't, that's not a position in their budget.
No, I know, I know.
So that, that's a position that is gonna be split between CPA and Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. It's funded. We just, I, I think they misunderstood the conversation about what are we gonna do about these benefits and thought we weren't gonna fund it. But I just need some further conversation with that and we'll sort this out.
Please, 'cause there, there's a need.
The, the problem's gonna be filling it though, once we.
I, I get it. I know, but thank you. Are, are we all done?
We, we are all done for tonight. Next meeting is not till, uh, Thursday at five P M.
Alright, can, can I get a happy birthday tomorrow? It's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Oh, that's why we have a meeting tomorrow, cause it's your birthday.
That's right. Bye, everybody. Have a good night.